Commission meeting of July 24, 2013. My name is Kevin Staunton. I'm the Chair of the Edina Planning Commission. Jackie, would you please call the roll? Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions or modifications to the proposed meeting agenda? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Meeting agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda, which includes only the minutes of the regular meeting of the Edina Planning Commission meeting of July 10, 2013. Jackie, I understand you sent these by email. Did everyone have a chance to review them?
Not completely.
Well, I would, if we haven't had a chance to review them, I'd take a motion to just continue that to our next meeting.
I move that we continue approval of these till the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. All right, so we'll continue the consent agenda item. Next up is community comment. This is the time of the meeting where we set aside time for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not before the commission this evening or scheduled for a future meeting. Mr. Persha, we haven't had anybody at community comment for a while, so glad to have you. Just come on up, introduce yourself, and give your name and address.
You're the closest thing to Abe Lincoln since I left Chicago last week.
I'll take that comparison, thank you.
Just a compliment to the planning commission, by the way. You have community comment where it actually belongs, unlike the city council. So you can quote me on that, so you got a gold star for that one. My name is Gene Persha. I live at 6917 Cornelia Drive. I want to make a few comments about remodels that go on in a edina. And they are not under the same supervision and rules as teardowns. And I want to just give you some things to think about, and perhaps you can make some comments either tonight, call me back, or give me some feedback. I'm very concerned how major remodels, what they do to neighborhoods over a long period of time. There are some homes in my neighborhood that have been in a stage of remodeling for over two years. One home has had a blue tarp on it for approximately eight months before they decided to put the roof on, the actual shingles. I'm very concerned about dumpsters in front yards for over two years. I'm concerned about front yards being virtually totally ripped up for more than a year. I'm concerned about outhouses being in front of remodels, now not teardowns, remodels are for well over a year. I'm concerned about how fast big dumpsters, I mean, you know, like the 12, 15 footers, get emptied. They could be there for months and months and months. I have just come across, well, let me just go and order some of my recommendations I want to refer to, a thing in the code that I think is not enforced or even checked on by some people. I think there needs to be an overseer of teardowns like we have for, I'm sorry. We need an overseer of remodels as we have for teardowns. That person could be the same person. The person that the city hired recently told me she doesn't take a look at major remodels. It's just the teardown stuff, or new homes. There needs to be a roster of all the teardowns when they start, as well as all the major remodels when they start, so we know how long they've been going on. The total remodeling, the major remodeling, should take no longer than two years. I can speak from a little experience of my own home, it's been remodeled three times with me in it, not major, but it was done in due course and deliberate speed. What I was impressed with my home, there was an actual schedule of when things were going to get done. And lo and behold, they've, all the contractors met their schedule, whether it's plumbing, roofing, electrical, and so forth. So I was very impressed with that. But they had an actual schedule, all graphed out, all by the dates and everything, and it was pretty well adhered to. I think there needs to be photographs taken, so we have a point of comparison, a baseline, how things look at a certain date, how they have progressed. And I'm talking mainly about the exterior of homes now. The interior obviously can go on for some time, there's more finer work to be done. But I think the exterior, we need to move at deliberate speed, and some of these do not move virtually at all. It's amazing, in my neighborhood, some roofs were put on in the dead of winter with two feet of snow. Some are left with blue tarps for months. Lawns need to be put in as soon as the exterior work is done, so they're not muck holes. They could be breeding grounds for mosquitoes, they're just literally slumps at some time. They really look really bad when they've been undone for several years. As I said, dumpsters need to be emptied and done away with after major demolition or thralls are done. And then a smaller dumpster, or perhaps skids, can be put in the garage and haul out as the need be, so that stuff is not stored in the front yard for literally years. So I want to just make one reference to the city code, which is, I believe, not enforced. It's Code 480.02, talks about the completion of exterior residences. And it reads as follows. "The roof and all exterior surfaces of a single dwelling unit and a double dwelling unit buildings and buildings and structures accessory thereto shall be completed with exterior finished materials within 12 months after the date of the building permit issued for new construction, alteration, remodeling, or relocation of such building or structure." I believe that's not enforced. And the other thing, if we have extenuating circumstances like we do occasionally, I think the contractor or the individuals who own the home need to apply for another building permit. That could be another fee, or we can even have a penalty clause in there to give some incentive to get this work done with prompt order. I personally believe you can remodel a home in two years easy. I have a new home in my neighborhood going up. It's in its seventh month. The whole exterior is virtually done. They're faster with that than they are with a remodel. And I want one more thing. Commercial remodels have to be looked at also. Watch what's going on across in the Westin Hotel, the new apartment buildings. We got huge piles of dirt. I want to know how long those piles of dirt are going to be there, and they're not all needed to make berms. But we have an unsightly construction site, whether it's commercial or residential, and I think we have to set limits, timing, and various reports on when this stuff is going to get moved out and look more presentable to those of us who live. So, thank you. Any questions, I'll be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Persha. I think you raise a good point. I know that we have made some progress with respect to the construction management policy and hiring someone to enforce that. And you make the good point that so far that applies to teardowns, and as I understand it, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that our code defines that and separates it from remodels, and what, that if the house is more than half of the existing structure is removed, then it's considered a teardown that falls within that. And I guess I'd just ask staff to make note of this and be thinking about whether in the future we ought to be expanding the definition of that once our new person gets her feet on the ground and starts making progress. Certainly, I can see situations where you might have 10% of the existing houses is taken apart, but it's expanded now to be twice as big as it used to be, and maybe that's something that we ought to be looking at. So, I think you make good points.
Thank you. One last comment. How about if someone gets back any by December, would that be reasonable about?
Well, and I don't know if anybody will be getting back to, but I think it's worth city staff, as they're moving forward, asking us, you know, looking at whether we ought to expand the scope of the areas that staff is supervising on this construction management, and considering perhaps ordinance amendments, et cetera.
We'd also ask that the teardown specialists come in and report back as what is finding. So, once some of that comes back in, maybe there'll be more information forthcoming.
Yeah, good questions for us to ask, too, when we have, we've asked to visit with her once she's had a chance to get some experience, and those would be good questions for us to follow up with.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persha. Any other people who would like to comment in community comment? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close community comment.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, community comment is closed. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is a subdivision preliminary plat. I'm going to butcher the name, Shaint addition. Thank you. It's just misspelled. I feel better. 5612 Tracy Avenue in Edina. Chris, you'll introduce this for us?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Rodney Helm is proposing to subdivide the property at 5612 Tracy Avenue into two lots. The lot is an oversized lot compared to surrounding lots containing mature trees and relatively steep slopes along Hawks Terrace to the south. Current access to the site is from Tracy Avenue. The single-family home that's on the site, as indicated in the survey here, will be removed. Access is off of Tracy Avenue currently. The neighborhood varies in lot sizes, as you can see. The lots to the north of Vernon and also to the east of Tracy are all much larger, deeper, and for the most part wider than the homes that are, or the lots that are on the west side of Tracy. This is the proposed subdivision, and what you'll notice is that they are planning on utilizing the existing driveway to the north. And that is in order to retain the slopes and vegetation that are along the south of the property, along Hawks Terrace. The areas that are boxed in red are the buildable areas of the lot. The one to the east, actually, the house will have to match the front yard setback of the home to the north that faces Tracy Avenue. This was the original subdivision that they had proposed that would require driveways off of Hawks Terrace that would have required significant grading and removal of trees. They've now modified that so that they'd be utilizing that existing driveway. The subdivision with similar circumstances was approved just to the south at 5612 Tracy The subdivision that is before you this evening, the city engineers reviewed the proposed plans and found them generally acceptable. Adequate drainage and utility easements are proposed along all the lot lines. The detailed grading plans would be reviewed by the city engineer at the time of building permit. Within the neighborhood, the median lot area is 17,651 square feet with a depth of 157 and a median lot width of 80.7. Now, these lots will consist of a width of 80 feet, which is just slightly less than the median, 122 feet in depth, and 9,820 square feet. The medians are much larger based on all of those lots that are to the north and also to the east of the subject property. The grading plans show that the buildable area of the lot on one is, again, smaller than on lot two. This will not affect, if you approve the subdivision as proposed, it will not allow for a 15-foot setback off of Tracy Avenue. They would have to respect that side street setback. The primary issue, are there practical difficulties relating to the property? The practical difficulty is due to the fact that the subject property is double the size of the lots on the block currently. The block was originally platted with lots similar in size to those proposed with the subdivision, with the exception of the subject property. The lot width and depth requirements are due to wider and deeper lots further away from the subject property, as you can see, to the north and also to the east. The requested variances to split the lot are reasonable in the context of the immediate neighborhood. The existing lot is both larger and wider than the other properties in the immediate area, and the proposed subdivision would result in two lots more characteristic of the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to preserve the slopes and vegetation along Hawks Terrace, which includes black walnut trees, by using the existing driveway off of Tracy Avenue to gain access from both lots, rather than to cut into a new driveway off of Hawks Terrace. The primary issue are the circumstances unique to the property. The condition of the oversized lot is unique to the west side of Tracy Avenue on this block. The surveyor did indicate that the lot widths and depths and areas of the property is skewed based on what has occurred on both the east of Tracy and north of Vernon. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, the proposed improvements requested by the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood includes a vast majority of single-family homes and similar lot size. The applicant proposes not to disturb the character along Hawks Terrace by utilizing the existing driveway off of Tracy Avenue to access both of the lots. Staff recommends approval based on the following findings, except for the variances. The proposal meets the required standards and ordinance for subdivision. The proposal is consistent with the lots on this block on the west side of Tracy, north of Hawks Terrace. The 80-foot wide lot is wider than the general standard required width of 75 feet, and the 9,820 square foot lot that is being proposed is larger than the general standard minimum lot area of 9,000 square feet. The proposal meets the required standards for variance because the unique situation of the property caused by the existing size of the property, which is roughly two times the size of most of the lots on the block. The requested variances are reasonable in the context of the immediate neighborhood. The proposed subdivision will result in two lots more characteristic of the neighborhood. The variance will meet the intent of the ordinance because the proposed lots are a similar size as others adjacent. If the variances were to be denied, the applicant would be denied a use of his property on 80-foot wide and a 9,000-square-foot lot, which is common within the area. Approval should be subject to the following conditions. The city must approve the final plat within one year of the preliminary approval, or receive a written application for a time extension. Parkland dedication fee of $5,000 must be paid prior to the release of the final plat. Vehicle access to the lots shall be off of Tracy Avenue with the cross easement agreement. Compliance with the conditions required by the Director of Engineering with his memo dated July 18, 2013 that was attached to your report. And prior to issuance of building permit, the following items must be submitted. Evidence of Nine Mile Creek Watershed District approval, and we, the city may require some revisions to the preliminary plat based upon that. Curb cut permit obtained from the city engineering department. Grading plan subject to review and approval by the city engineer. A construction management plan will be required for the construction of the new homes. Utility hookups are subject to review with the city engineer. And a private driveway easement established over lot one to serve lot two must be filed with Hennepin County. And with that, I will stop and answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Commissioner Forrest.
I just have a procedural question. When this goes to the council, then, do they hold a second public hearing after we?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Just to clarify for me, so if the subdivision occurs, and you've got the buildable area, which is in red there?
Yes.
And if someone wants to get a building permit, are they going to be able to build on those locations and not have to come back to us for a variance?
They should be able to. The lot one actually has well over 2,000 square feet of buildable area on it, even given the required front yard setback. So they should be fine.
All right, thank you.
So, Chris, just to make sure, in terms of the variances, our, am I correct in understanding that the width, depth, and area are all driven by the median within 500 feet?
Correct. And that's a wide net.
That's a what?
It's a pretty wide net that's cast.
Right. And is that true throughout the R1 district?
Yes.
Because certainly the lot area ends up being a large variance. I mean, we're being asked to approve a lot, lot sizes that are probably half the median for this 500-foot area.
Correct. On the east side of Tracy and north of Vernon, they are much larger in area. Nearby, the lots that are adjacent to the west are very similar, and in that area, they're very close to that square footage.
And across the street as well?
Right.
At 5705 and 5701?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Platter.
I'd say they still are over the minimum lot size in the city.
Yes.
After they sub.
There's no variance required from the minimum lot size.
I mean, just as a?
From the zoning ordinance perspective.
They're over 9,000 square feet.
Right.
So they will be, they will satisfy the zoning code in terms of?
Yes.
The minimum lot size and minimum lot width and minimum lot depth?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest.
I'm clear on things tonight. When you were referring to lot two, was it the eastern or western one?
The western lot is lot two, and the eastern lot is lot one.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because you said this one still has this much building space. I was wondering if it was the smaller of the two. I just wanted to make sure I'm discussing the right one. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, hearing none, we'd like to hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing for comments from the members of the public. Come on forward, yeah, one of the side microphones is best. Introduce yourself and?
Do I press anything, or what?
I think you're all good.
All right, hi. My name is Rod Helm. I'm the listing agent for the property, working with the Chinights.
Welcome, Mr. Helm.
Acting as the applicant tonight. I also worked with Miriam Kaiser on the 5633 Tracy subdivision that was brought up as an example. Because of that, I'm pretty familiar with this specific area and dealing with these medians. And I understand the intent of zoning, wanting to work to medians, because medians are always trying to describe what's typical. And I think in a number of Edina neighborhoods, when you have, such as Parkwood Knolls, or Country Club, or South Erie Park, where you do have typical types, settings for sites, I think it really helps with the guideline. One of the Excel sheets that I put together kind of showed how this is almost two neighborhoods, and because of that 500-foot draw, we draw on roughly 22 lot sites that are between 120 and 140 in depth. And then there's another 20-some properties that are in the upper 200s to 300 in depth. So what happens on this median, it doesn't really describe typical, it just kind of describes the midpoint of two larger data sets. And I think it kind of proves itself out when you look down Hawks and every single site on that street going west is virtually what we're trying to accomplish here with this site. Another point I'd like to bring up, too, is of the 500-foot radius sites, there are really only two sites that, from a top-down look, looked like they were originally two sites, two platted sites. That was Miriam Kaiser's at 5633. It clearly looked like it was two sites fitting in there. This one, with, you look how, it certainly appears that this site was supposed to belong to Hawks originally. It would have been two 80-foot sites fronting Hawks. You know, so this really isn't a common occurrence throughout this 500-foot neighborhood, even with the larger sites, they really are not positioned to look like two plats side by side. A third thing?
So you're saying you're not going to be back for a third one?
No, I don't think so. This really isn't my specialty, it just keeps seeming that way. The other point that we really thought was unique about this, too, is, you know, what we're doing is realigning those sites to Hawks now. And if you travel Hawks and Tracy, there's, the current site's a little bit of an outlier. The property sits up high, it's way back. It doesn't really create a strong corner for our neighborhood. I think having two sites front Hawks will help accomplish the neighborhood of Hawks. I think for the incoming builder, someday, it'll give a really nice ability to present something on the corner of Hawks and Tracy with that setback, with a nice side yard. And we spent a lot of time with Kerry through the process, you know, being sensitive to that hill line, you know, we certainly didn't want to create just tuck-under garages and ripping everything apart, so we looked at keeping that original driveway in the back, creating easement across, and really trying to work with, you know, what's there, and try to keep some of that foliage and the trees. In regards to the actual house that's there right now, it's a fairly dated four-level home that had a kind of unusual addition to it. It certainly needs a lot of capital improvements to it. It's a great 70s, 60s, 70s decor, I don't think it's, so there's not a lot of architectural value either in what's being proposed to be taken down, or any kind of architectural significance to the property. Really looking at this, it just certainly seems like a really practical use of this site, and a nice improvement to that corner. And it's very much in line with what the rest of the block looks like going to the west and across the street. I think that's all I had as far as comments. It's, you know, I know because of this circumstance on the median and how it lines up in this neighborhood, it misses all three medians. I put the same spreadsheet in there for the widths. You can see that a number of properties are within seven inches of each other, so the 80 virtually is at the median. So from a presentation from the street, it will appear very much like every other site in the neighborhood. And again, the depths are part of a two, kind of a two-grouping stage in there that really this median process doesn't work well for, because half of the properties in there are so far off median because of it, just because they're really, you know, distributed in odd positioning. It almost seems like there should be some sort of standard deviation process to help describe, you know, the area, or I guess, you know, this is probably the way to go about it, is to look at it more from a, you know, how does it fit practically, or is it in the spirit of what you guys want? So, do you have any questions at all for me?
Questions from Mr. Helm.
Just a quick question.
Commissioner Carpenter.
When I look at the, I think it's, I'm not sure which map this is, but this one?
Yeah, that's the 500-foot.
Okay. I'm looking at 5705 and 5701. I'm kind of curious where the driveways are on those. I'm guessing that they're empty out onto Hawks.
They do, they do. You know, we kind of looked at it a couple of different ways with Kerry of perhaps having maybe the western of the two properties have a front-loaded garage into the hillside and the Tracy-sided lot coming off of Tracy. I think the takeaway especially, and there was trying to be some sensitivity to the block, and I know people appreciate that hill line, there's some nice foliage and trees on there. That kind of became the core driver. We actually prepared, you know, we came into it with the idea of doing that easement to Kerry and presented it really two different ways. So one of the diagrams that you saw with both front-loaded was just another option for it, just expressing it. I think it, you know, a couple of things that would be negative for the, so I'm not representing the builders, I'm just helping the Chinights sell their property and what, from a sale standpoint, means the most to them, because if it were left alone as a property, it is a financial difference. But for the incoming builder, I think there's some considerations. Where else in that tuck-under is going to take away basement? It's going to really chop into that hill, it's going to prevent them from, I think, creating some nice, fairly even-platted properties up there. It has a nice treetop feeling, I think, for the incoming builder, there's some nice marketability to it. I think positioning onto Tracy with the right side-loaded entrance, I think that's going to be, have some nice opportunities, have some creative-looking property. We also do some new constructions in Minneapolis, so we always look at, you know, how property should present right, and how they should work with the neighborhood right. And I feel like this does have that ability to set up right, you know, especially with that easement across the back. So again, you know, we were open to both. It felt like the current really went towards this easement, and that's what I think Kerry really felt, too, and it felt like the neighborhood, from a sensitivity to that bluff, we didn't want to rip into it. Now, I know the incoming developer that's interested in the property would probably want to bring stairs in and, you know, create front entrances, because they want to have the properties belong to Hawks. But that's very different than plowing through the whole hill and doing tuck-under garages and, you know, and changing the whole characteristic of that, so.
Thanks.
Commissioner Forrest.
Well, you answered my one question, and there I was wondering? Well, you answered my one question, and there I was wondering how you anticipated the view and the relationship of the homes with Hawks, and so.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the lot to the west will have a fairly traditional feeling to it, facing Hawks. I think the corner lot, they'll need to somehow, if I were designing the house, I'd try to capture that large side yard now off of Tracy with maybe some sort of screen porch tie-in to that side yard, and really try to maximize that spacing into some nice green space, but still presenting with Hawks as your, with your primary address and frontage. And I think if you, if you walk down Hawks, I think it will also help complete that corridor as it approaches Tracy, because it feels like it tends to drop off as, you know, because this, the current house is so far up and so far off, it doesn't really have a, a strong sense of neighborhood anchoring on that end of it, I guess is a better used word.
That was my second question, and you did it again, so I was wondering, no, I think it's great. I was wondering, is that what you mean then, when you say you want to create a strong corner?
Yeah, I think so, you know, because right now, there's, you know, where two houses are across the street, there's really not a house on this side, on the north side, and the current house is set so far back and up, and, you know, it doesn't really belong to Tracy either, it is really a different setting than even the Tracy houses that front it. And I think, given that street, and it, it just, I think it just has some nice potential to pick up an added benefit here, to, to help Hawks even, you know, complete itself and tie itself into that corner better, and, and make a strong corner, you know, where you feel like it's a truly residential corner.
And you're proposing to keep the driveway curb cut on Tracy?
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it would be in the same spot. We, we're certainly going with that theme. Right now, the driveway is on the far north end of, end of the lot, you know, going into the site. I think that would be the most logical, is keep the curb cut, keep a single driveway width coming in, and then let the lot number one pull off of it, and then let number two pull off of it at once it's in.
So there'd be cross easements to.
Yeah, we would have to define an easement, you know, across Lot 1 for Lot 2, and that sounds like that's part of the conditions.
Right.
And I think that right now, it's, it's very much tucked on the north end, I think you'd want to maintain that, just to, to provide as much yard as you can across there.
Chris, is there, is Tracy a city street?
It's a, it's a city street with, it does pick up some state subsidy dollars, we did contact the state as part of the process.
I guess that the question I'm driving at is, do we need any, you know, are there, are there any other governmental units we need to talk to about curb cuts, or once you've got this curb cut, is that part of our subdivision that, do they get more than one? I mean, are we going to see a curb cut on Hawks as a result of this, or not?
No, the city engineers already reviewed it and approved it for one curb cut.
So one curb cut, so there wouldn't be a way for them to come back in the future and ask for a second?
Well, they could come back and ask, but.
Wouldn't, okay.
No, it wouldn't be part of this subdivision.
But that is, that is what we're expected to do as part of the subdivision approval is, that if there's going to be one curb cut for these two properties, that's the idea behind the subdivision?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the incoming buyer developers aware of what we're proposing, and that actually was their preference too, to have a north single easement, or a single driveway with easement to, to supply both sites, because it's going to allow construction a little bit more of kind of a treetop feeling to the properties.
Sure.
Certainly if they think there's merits to something different, they can present their case later, but at this point, this seems to me what would be most logical for it.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, Mr. Helm.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, I would open the public hearing and invite any members of the public who would like to comment on this application to come forward and share your thoughts. Just come to one of the side microphones and introduce yourself, your name and address, and.
Good evening.
Share your thoughts.
I'm Tim Loughlin, I live at 5705 Hawks Terrace, just across from the property that you're talking about. I've lived there over 40 years. And while I hear Mr. Helm talk about strong corners, it seems like, to me, like he's not going to live there, and it's worked just fine for me all these years. You know, in a perfect world for me, the lot would stay as it is. And I understand the property rights, and maybe, and the Shenites are nice folks, and I've known them for a long time. The way that that house and lot, and the adjoining lots that are large lots, and there are smaller lots in there too, I understand that. In a perfect world, I would like to see it not subdivided. Kind of sounds like it's way down the road, and I understand that too. So my comment is, number one, it's strong corners doubling, doubling houses on what has been for many years a single lot. It's always about money, city taxes and developer profit, I understand that. And if it's, if it needs to be, it needs to be. With the driveway on Tracy, it makes it more palatable. Driveways coming into Hawks Terrace would be awful for a whole lot of reasons. That's, my house looks right at that property, and you can probably see that from the drawings. And I don't know much about how this process works, because I've not been here before. So I came tonight to, to get a little better picture of what was going on. Would rather, rather it stay at, as one lot, but I'm only one guy. And I did talk to my neighbors, the Nelsens, who are on the corner of, they're out of town now, and so are the Douglas's, but less objectionable with the Tracy entrance. Even the front, front entrances coming down to Hawks Terrace, I wonder how that works. Alls I see now is blocks of buildings, and the other property that was mentioned on Tracy Avenue that was subdivided, I think has been empty for a year. The grass finally got mowed this week, I think. There's a pile of cement and blocks and dirt in the yard that's been there for a very long time. I like the comments that the man made in the general part of the meeting about you subdivide, and then they tear stuff down, and then it sits and looks like awful for a long time. I worry about that too, right across the street. Anyhow, that's my comments. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Loughlin.
Thank you.
I have a procedural question.
Sure, come on up. Why don't you come on up? Maybe you can fill us in on the property across the street.
Yeah, I would like to just comment real quickly on the other Tracy property that, that the gentleman mentioned.
Because I drove by the other day and saw the high grass.
Yeah, that has been finally cut. You know, that was supposed to close two months ago, and she's been in, you know, a hospital with recovery, and there's been some events why it hasn't been cut. It is closing in a week. It was cut, I think, a few days ago, finally. The cement you saw was that we worked with the city to try to, they, they asked to remove a retaining wall to help with water and sewer at the time, so we got the stub ends done when the road was being done, so we didn't have to tear up the road again. So that was in conjunction with the city to help with the, the whole process of that, and that was her retaining wall that they had left on site. So, so there's, there was a seasonal aspect to that too. You know, we've been talking about the grass issue, because it came up a few different times now, but really, you know, for Miriam, she's an 85-year-old woman that, that we thought were closing beginning of June, and also she went in the hospital, and there's been some delays on why that happened.
Is the purchaser a developer or owner of one of the properties?
Which, which property?
Of, of, are you selling separately?
Yeah, both properties are, are purchased by developers that are working with builders, but Miriam Kaiser's property up until now the 30th, which we finally rescheduled to, it was her property, so this wasn't the developer that had delayed it.
I understand that, you're saying that it hasn't closed yet, so.
Yeah.
Once it closes, then the new owners will be responsible for maintaining.
Right, and part of that timeline has actually been my deal, because it was learning your process, and, and understanding parallel running on some of this, and, and understanding county response times and that, because we went through this in April, I think, is when we got city council approval on, on Miriam's. We probably could have closed in May if we would have known the, anyways, I'm experiencing a little bit of a learning curve now with the second one coming through with this. But I, I don't want you to hold that particular situation against what the Shenites are doing. Shenites are going to live there till it closes. You know, if, if everything flows right, the closing hopefully will be sometime in late October, developer will take over ownership at that point, and I'm sure they'll, whatever at that point, they'll be working on their buildings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I just wanted to comment about that since it's brought up.
Any questions on that topic? Commissioner Forrest?
I just wanted to disclose that when I was out there viewing the property, I did encounter Mr. Loughlin and a neighbor. They looked at my site plan, I told them what was on the web, and that they did not direct any comments about this project to me.
Okay.
I, I would say too, I've not had any negative comments directed at me or questions. I had one person call just with, with questions on what's being done, but that's been the extent of, you know, and my name is on the, the zoning sign, so.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Mr. Helm.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the public while we still have the public hearing open? Come on up. Tell us your name and address, and share your thoughts with us, please.
My name is Terry Rockford, and I live at 5604 Hawks Drive, so I'm around the corner on the cul-de-sac.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Terry Rockford.
Welcome, Ms. Rockford.
I really don't have a, much of an issue with the subdivision. I have more, some questions, and as a layperson, I just kind of want to understand, if this gets approved, and a builder buys the property, again, to reiterate, that driveway would be on Tracy, right? Otherwise, we'd have to go through this whole process again?
There would be some process that we would have to go through.
Because I, I would, I would have a real issue with the driveways on Hawks, because I, I drive down Hawks, and the corner of Hawks Drive and, of Hawks Terrace and Tracy is a blind spot now, trying to get out. So if there was any thing, you know, that hill built out, or whatever, it, it's a danger to the kids in, in the area.
So you would second Mr. Loughlin's comment about the desirability of keeping the driveway on Tracy?
Yes, I do, and I've talked to a lot of my neighbors around that do come down Hawks Terrace. The other thing is parking. If those are going, if they're going to have entrances and everything, when you come around the corner from Tracy onto Hawks, it's a blind spot, and we have cars parked there now from, you know, people on Tracy, but if those are going to be the fronts of those houses, there are going to be a lot more cars there. And it is a danger, again, it's an issue, so I, I'm just thinking, this needs to be addressed at some point, with either no parking on that side, or, you know, someone needs to look at it before we have some pretty bad accidents there.
Because of the topography of that hill there?
Yes, yes. So really, I, the hill can't, the hill would be nice if it was kind of dug out a little more, but it can't be, it can't grow, or there's going to be more problems, and more people will be complaining. I was kind of the one that got voted to come and talk tonight.
Got the shorts drawn, huh?
So I don't have an issue with, with the subdivision, it's just kind of the mechanics of how it's going to work.
The safety of the corner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the grass being cut.
Okay. I think we got the grass being cut. All right, other members of the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, so back here for deliberation, any comments, questions from members of the commission? Commissioner Potts?
I, I'd just like to say, I think this is a very reasonable subdivision request, based on all the comments that Chris made in the staff report. I think the lot size makes sense relative to the surrounding lots. In particular, I appreciate the solution in terms of its land use that saves, saves trees, respects the exist, existing topography, and also uses a driveway easement to keep the garages in the rear. I think that's all good, so I'd even extend that to a motion to approve the subdivision request based on staff report recommendations and conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, I, when I look at this proposal, I, actually, it seemed to me like a slam dunk, it seemed very reasonable and appropriate, but having listened also to some of the testimony, it does make me wonder if there's a possibility, and I don't know if Chris could speak to this or not, is there, if there's any possibility that there could be something done to alleviate the size of the hill on that corner that apparently creates the, the blind spot? Is that something that's, that has a possibility of occurring?
We can certainly look into it.
Just wanted to make that general observation, I, otherwise, I think it makes sense, I, I don't think it's, it doesn't look to me like it's possible to have two driveways serving what is now 5612 off of Tracy, and coming off of Hawks Terrace seems like the only functional way to do it and still preserve the opportunity for two lots. So in that regard, I, I agree completely with Mr. Potts, I just have a reservation about the, about the, the blind spot, and if there's, I'll leave it up to others to comment if they have it. Any thoughts?
Commissioner Platter?
I was going to say, I like how they've agreeing with most of those comments, but I like how, taking the opportunity to work with the land there, and, you know, not necessarily go in and change all the grading and potentially produce other issues for the neighborhood, so I like how that's maintained, as well as the driveway on the one side, that's, that's a shared one, so I think that's a, you know, from an overall hardscape area, I think that is less for the two lots combined than, than separate, so I, I just want to comment that I, I think it's done a nice job of, of staying within the, the limits that are with the lot already, versus radically changing that, that lot. So I would also vote to approve it along with that, so.
Commissioner Kerr?
I have no additional comments, I support the proposal and agree with the commissioner's comments.
Commissioner Forrest?
I have comments. Anyway, I, I guess, one thing, I, I just wanted to just throw some things out there so it's in the discussion and in the record, but perhaps because of the terrain, that's why those lots were combined, and it was built as a single, a single plotted lot. There are, there's a lot of tree canopy there, mature trees that will be lost, and I just want us to be aware of that. Once again, our urban tree canopy would be affected. The median lot size isn't a convincing thing for me either, I, I'm in agreement with the rest of the commission on that. But once again, it's, it's that awkward thing of we're looking at a practical difficulty as being a lot that's too big, and that this lot, they can still build a single-family home on it, it's not a unique practical difficulty, so that's a little awkward for me. The other thing is, the procedurally here, we're doing the lot subdivision, we aren't, and we're dealing, we're using the variance regarding the lot subdivision, not for setbacks or anything else, but I, I do want to encourage the builders, whoever they are, to be in communication with the neighbors as we have encouraged with all tear downs in the city, because that's, that's a good thing, and I think it can head off a lot of problems to begin with. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
I guess all I would add to that is I'm, I had some concerns about the, the magnitude of the variance, I am, the documentation on pages A17, A18, and A19 of our packet does reinforce the point that Ms. Ocker made about the immediate area, comparing especially the lot area in the immediate, the immediate vicinity. So I'm less concerned about changing the character.
So I'm less concerned about changing the character of the neighborhood or the immediate neighborhood. I would suggest perhaps picking up on Commissioner Forrest's comments that, you know, I'm not quite sure why we have a median lot area of 500 feet when obviously you're, you know, you get into a neighborhood like this where you've got very different character of lot plating on the east side of Tracy than you do on the west side of Tracy for a whole variety of reasons, yet we're picking the median of those and then asked to make a variance. We might want to think about whether, think about the wisdom of that rule in the future. So, but those are the only comments. It sounds like there's a strong preference in the neighborhood for the Tracy entrance, so I think that's a good thing and keeping, I'm in agreement with the comments about trying to keep the topography. The one comment I would make on Commissioner Carpenter's observations is I think the safety issue is a real one, we can take care of it, but I think it can be a traffic management. It may be that you decide to do no parking on one side of the street or something along those lines to try and manage the safety issues that are created by the topography there. So with that, if there's no further comments, I would call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Helm, thank you to the members of the public who came forward to share their thoughts on this topic. Next up is final rezoning, final platting, final development, Edina 55 LLC, 5109 through 5125 49th Street West in Edina. And Chris, I assume you're going to introduce this one as well? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I have the wrong. Okay, this is something that has been before you on a number of occasions, so I won't belabor it. Hunt and Associates are requesting a final review of the redevelopment of the three lots located at 5109 to 5125 West 49th Street, as highlighted. Consists of two apartment buildings and a single-family home. It consists of 10 units. And here are some photos of the existing conditions of the site and different angles looking towards the east and in various places on the site. This is the original plan that the Planning Commission reviewed and the council also reviewed. It consisted of 17 units. This is the current plan that's before you this evening, it's the final development plan, final plat, rezoning for PUD, and it has been reduced to 16 units. No rooftop decks, three stories instead of four stories. The applicant received preliminary rezoning and plan approval for this project on April 16th, 2013. The applicant is now seeking that final rezoning, PUD, planned unit development rezoning. On April 16, the city council approved a comprehensive plan amendment to guide the site, MDR, medium density residential, to allow a density of five to 12 units, and it will be 11 units. The proposed plans are consistent with the plans that were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, again, with the reduction from 17 to 16 units. This is the basement floor plan, main floor plan, and upper level, so there's three levels. And again, the rooftop, which no longer has the rooftop deck. The various elevations of the project and different views and also showing it in context with the distances of the building from other residential properties and also Vernon Avenue. Here are some renderings of the property from 49th Avenue looking east, 49th Avenue looking west, Vernon Avenue looking west, and then Vernon Avenue looking towards the east. Access to the site would be one way in and one way out of a private drive from 49th Street West on the north side of the site. The fire marshal has requested that the private drive that's shown here be increased from 18 to 20 feet to accommodate emergency vehicles. Some slight adjustments to interior green spaces or building placement will be needed, but it shouldn't affect the setbacks of the buildings from the perimeter of the site. The public pedestrian connection would be made from the sidewalk along 49th Street up to Vernon Avenue on the west side of the property. Regarding landscaping, based on the perimeter of the site, the applicant has actually required 25 overstory trees and then a mixture of shrubs and understory. They're proposing 87 overstory trees and a full complement of understory landscaping, so it'll be very heavily landscaped. Regarding the grading, drainage, and utilities, the city engineer has reviewed the proposed plans and found them to be generally acceptable, subject to the comments and conditions outlined in his July 18 memo. The developer's agreement would be required for the construction of the proposed sidewalks, utilities, and other public improvements. A proposed infiltration system for stormwater has been reviewed and is supported by the city engineer and is preferred over having any other sort of system such as a permeable paver system. The building materials are proposed to be painted fiber cement, architectural cast stone, and stained wood panels. Regarding the final plat, the applicant is also requesting final plat called O'Brien Kimmel to create separate lots for each proposed unit. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat with the exception that there be one less unit. Regarding parkland dedication, the developer would create six new dwelling units, therefore $30,000 would be required for parkland dedication at the time of release of the final plat. Future project expansion, the proposed plans have been designed so that the proposed project could be extended to the east, the internal driveway could be extended as needed into the eastern portion of the site that's adjacent. Regarding signage, the required signage for the site would be regulated by the PUD ordinance. The primary issue is the PUD zoning district appropriate for the site. Staff believes that the PUD is appropriate for the site. The conditions remain the same as reviewed by the Planning Commission and City Council for preliminary PUD approval. Staff recommends final rezoning to PUD, final development plan, and final plat. Approval is subject to the following findings. The proposal is consistent with the approved preliminary development plan for the site. The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which contemplates medium density housing for the site. The proposal of plat, proposed plat meets all zoning and subdivision ordinance requirements. The proposal would create a more efficient and creative use of the property. Currently, the site does not engage Vernon Avenue. Today, it's clearly the back of the site and contains mature trees. The proposed site plan turns and faces the property to Vernon Avenue with a row of two-story townhomes. The project would enhance the pedestrian connections, the plan provides for public sidewalk through the site from 49th to Vernon, and also connect up to the Grandview District. Landscaping would be enhanced, extensive landscaping is proposed around the perimeter of the site and adjacent to the proposed townhomes. The number of overstory trees is double the amount that's required by city code. Approval is subject to the following conditions. Subject to staff approval, the site must be developed and maintained in substantial conformance with the following plans unless modified. The site plan dates stamped June 24, 2013. Grading plan stamped June 24, 2013. Utility plan, landscape plan, building elevations, building materials board that would be presented this evening. All plans are date stamped June 24, 2013. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, a final landscape plan must be submitted, subject to staff approval. Additionally, a performance bond letter of credit would be required. The property owner is responsible for replacing any required landscaping that does die in the future. Submit a copy of the Minnehawah Creek Watershed District permit and the city may require revisions to be approved, to the approved plans to meet those district requirements. The final plat must be filed with the county within one year of city council approval. If the plat is not filed, it shall be deemed null and void. A shared parking and access agreement must be established across the plat. A parkland dedication fee of $5,000 per dwelling unit is required. The park dedication fee is due prior to the release of the final plat. Compliance with the conditions required by the city engineer are required for the memo, as per the memo dated July 19, 2013, and compliance with the fire marshal recommendation in his email dated July 12, 2013. And with that, I will stop and try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Commissioner Kerr?
Could you just show me on the diagram where the, well, first of all, let me just comment that I'm happy to see that the density was reduced by one unit and the height was reduced as well. I think that addressed our concerns. But which unit was eliminated? Can you show me on that diagram you have up?
Actually, I don't know if I can answer that question. I will have the developer answer that.
Why don't we, why don't we hold that for you? You can come up in a second and we'll...
That's fine.
Have the applicant make a presentation, we can get that question answered. Any other questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris. All right, so if we can have the applicant come up and...
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Chris Pelkowitz with the BKV Group, a project architect on this project. To answer your question immediately, it was the northeastmost unit was, was the one, was the one that was removed, allowing additional space between our first unit and the neighboring house.
Okay, good, that's great, because that's where my concern was. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. The, our project is located at the north end of the Grandview Area Plan, and I think we really tried to work to work our project into the plan where the project, the area plan is looking for turning perceived buffer areas into opportunities. And two things we're doing here is we are not only improving the site from what's currently there, but we're also adding a walkway. That's a combination of stair and a bike-walking area as well to really connect the neighborhood to the north, to the, to the rest of the Grandview Area Plan. And it's, you know, it adds both for bicyclists and for pedestrians, and we think that's a great improvement of increasing access throughout the area. The current site is two apartment buildings and a single-family home, and currently it's 10 residents right now, and we're looking to go to 16 units at this point. We're, we're kind of looking at, we've got a couple of areas we have to look at as we're developing the plan where one side is very urban with Vernon and then another side has become very residential along 49th, and we're trying to be very respectful to both sides Here is some of the images of the existing buildings, the existing two-story apartments and the single-family home as well. Currently, there is a great deal of vegetation along Vernon Avenue, and I'll speak to that later, that we're looking to try to preserve some of it while cleaning up kind of what's there as well. So the updated plan is 16 units, eight along Vernon Avenue, five along 49th, and then three truly kind of facing towards the heavily wooded area than the railroad tracks at that point. The new amenity for the neighborhood is the path right here along the west side of the site. Some of the changes we've gone ahead and made since working through you guys as well as the city council is the removal of the one unit, adding the ability for the drive through here, and we think that kind of helps with some of the traffic concerns a bit and, you know, as we move forward, recognizing the fire marshal's concerns as well and incorporating that with just a few minimal tweaks. We've also gone ahead and pulled the homes along 49th further back off the site to increase the setback. I think we've increased it three to four feet since our previous meeting with you guys.
Mr. Pelkowitz, what does that leave the setback at now? I see on the site plan, is that 36 feet?
It is 36 feet at this point, to the, to the front, the face of the buildings.
So the patio within that, but there's, but to the face of the building is 36 feet?
Correct, and the patio is more of a, it's on a two-foot plinth, so it's more of just kind of a front yard kind of aspect at that point. And then there's also some stairs within the 35 feet to go to the main entry of those units along 49th.
Very good, thank you.
The other couple of changes that we've done here is we've also then removed the rooftop decks as well, reducing the overall height and just, you know, kind of bringing this down to a more residential scale as well. We've, we've taken great, we've gone to great lengths to really explore the landscape of this project and try to be, try to look at it in two ways, that we try to create a lot of color and a lot of texture for all four seasons and trying to also look for very kind of drought-hardy pieces of vegetation as well, so that we're not really overusing the water system of the city and, you know, just trying to be respectful to the general environment. Along that, I'll kind of break it into a few areas quickly. Along Vernon Avenue is, we're looking, our site is pulled back a bit of a ways from the sidewalk, and what we're looking to do is try to preserve a number of the existing trees that are there and just kind of clean up the mess of underbrush that's currently there and come back through with replanting of some new trees if needed and then as well as, you know, new shrubs and ground cover through there. As we get to our property itself, we start off with a nice landscape path, and then we go in with ornamental trees of, that flower in the, flower in the, in the fall and have a lot of different colors and ornamental grasses. What we're trying to do with the busyness of Vernon is create a bit of a buffer for those, for those houses, but also have an architectural presence along Vernon at the same time. So we're looking to do the two elements there. Along the, along the path, it's really truly kind of dedicated to the path. We get tight on the site there, but with the large amount of vegetation and the railroad tracks beyond, I think it creates a nice buffer for those, for those units as well. Along 49th, we kind of have a few, a few layers of landscaping on there, where we start off with a sidewalk and kind of typical boulevard trees through there, and then we work back to the site where we have a 18-inch stone plinth that's kind of similar to many of the homes you kind of see throughout Edina. And at that point, it becomes tall grasses, ornamental grasses, as well as ornamental trees in there, and works it up to the, to the patio of each unit. And then each unit kind of has a, you know, a front patio spot for gathering outdoor space and try to, you know, bring them to the neighborhood. More internal to the site, we're really looking to have a very kind of, something of a mix of urban and pastoral environment within, where we're not doing raised curbs, we're doing valley curbs and really keeping things low-lying and then allowing the vegetation to kind of be our, our height and buffer and softness with, within our site. For, for overall site drainage, we do have a underground tank system that has the water slowly percolate into the city system, so that it, so it controls the rate that's occurring. And then we're looking to, you know, tie our utilities into 49th and then work them through our kind of private drive area. The, with the first rendering here, you can see that we're really, we're really looking to create layers of kind of hardscape and softscape to really bring this building to the neighborhood and to the single-family homes and kind of create a nice transition through here. We have a sidewalk coming through that will tie into the new, the new neighborhood sidewalk and then, you know, a number of feet before you get to the landscape plinth and as well as the boulevard trees and additional layers of pieces... the boulevard trees and additional layers of pieces there. We are also looking at having a monument sign on the corner here as well. A view looking west from 49th. Vernon looking east. Vernon looking back west towards the project from the railroad bridge. I did go ahead and include a couple additional images here that were not in your packet at this point that I... You know, looking through it, I just wanted to show you guys have a chance to see more of the architecture with the vegetation turned off so you got a better feel of the materiality. And I would like to make one correction from Chris's presentation that we no longer have the... In the recent submission on the 24th, we no longer have the stained wood at this point. We are using a mix of cast stone. Cast stone along the sides of the buildings here and as well as in the landscape area, fiber cement for the brown areas and the charcoal areas, and then some stucco that will match the stone color that's back on the inner side of the... Within our courtyard space. And I, you know, I brought a material board to express the updated materials as well. And they are reflected on the current elevations that you're looking at. With that, I just wanted to bring one piece to your attention for input. After submitting this, we did receive the city engineer's comments, and we found most to be, you know, very acceptable. And one we were having a little bit of a difficult time with and would be interested in the planning commission's response to it as well. Along Vernon Avenue, we've been asked to add a five-foot grass boulevard before the sidewalk outside of our site. And there's kind of two, a few different aspects of it that first, this isn't really part of... That we noticed part of the comprehensive plan for the area, and we're as well between two bridges, so it kind of creates a unique situation here. The real reason we are opposed to the idea is we really wanted to try to keep as much existing vegetation and trees as possible. And we're concerned that by moving this five or six-foot sidewalk five or six feet in, then we're really going to be blowing out a wider swath of existing vegetation. And that's just a concern of ours that we'd be interested in your input today. With that, I'll open any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelkowitz. Commissioner Forrest.
Well, first of all, on that note, tell us about the vegetation that you want to preserve.
We haven't done a tree survey at this point, but we're really looking at the over trees particularly to try to keep the ones that are healthy as much as possible through there. And then likely clean out almost all the low-lying vegetation as it's in pretty poor condition at this point and kind of overgrown. And then kind of coming back through with a mix of kind of new shrubs and flowering perennials.
I'm just thinking, if you haven't done a tree survey, then it's... The argument doesn't fly as much for me, I guess, because I know there's a lot of buckthorn and a lot of other stuff in there that, you know, you're taking out a lot of the mature trees to build the actual buildings too. So that's why I was wondering. Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Pelkowitz? Commissioner Potts.
Just one more on that sidewalk. So I'm looking at the site layout and paving plan sheet C-300. Well, actually, we could look at it right there with the sheet you have on top. So the city would like the sidewalk moved closer to Vernon? Is that what you're describing?
No, this is a... Well, let me use a different plan here. So the existing sidewalk...
So is this sheet C-300?
This is C-500 right here. I can switch to C-300. One moment.
I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
Sure.
So you want to pull C-300? There we go.
Okay, C-300. So the existing sidewalk is right here at the edge of the street right now. And we're looking to continue that current buffer that's there. And what the proposal is, is to basically move in the width of the sidewalk...
Okay.
And come through with a new sidewalk through here.
With green space between that and the roadway?
And Vernon.
And how many feet?
They asked for five feet of...
Five feet of green space and how wide the sidewalk?
I don't know that they explicitly stated, but it's five or six feet.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'm not sure how I feel about that, one way or the other. But I know the city's moving to that sort of a standard, pulling the sidewalk off the curb to allow for some planting. One other, a different question I have for you is about your monument sign?
Yes.
That's not a city requirement, is it?
The monument sign itself?
Yeah.
It's not. Within the city code, it does allow for an area sign of up to 24 square feet. And that's kind of what we're using as kind of being the marker for this group of buildings.
Okay, I guess I just wonder if you need it for a development this size. Little bit neither here nor there, but that was my other question. Thank you.
Mike.
So this is a question maybe for the city staff as well. So would this fall under... I assume it would. This would fall under the new construction management plan then because it's across from residential, or how would that work?
The site itself would not be... You're talking about our new 411 for single-family and double-d dwelling units? No. Because this is a higher-density project.
I would like to... A condition to be put on here that that apply somehow because it is across from... I'm concerned about all the residents across the street when there's going to be a lot of construction here, a lot going on. And I think they should adhere to that as well if they... Unless there's something more from a commercial standpoint, which I don't think there is. And then the other comment was I had heard some... That the storm in the street had floods once in a while. Do you know if the city engineer had looked into that? It was one of the earlier comments we had from resident that apparently there's a storm line in the street that may flood. And I don't know all the details, but maybe you could ask Wayne to look into that.
I could certainly have him look into it. This is on 49th, is you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't... He reviewed all of the plans.
Yeah, I just wanted to double-check on that.
He didn't mention it, but I could certainly mention it to him.
Yeah, and I think it's good they're doing an infiltration system here. I'm assuming that will help out with that versus what it is today. Those were my comments again, meaning for the city.
Commissioner Forrest.
Just a question. I was looking at the city engineer's comments, and it says to show the potential future roadway as shown in the Grandview plan. I'm not sure what's being referred to there.
I'm sorry, what?
Our Director of Engineering said that they should on sheet L-100, show potential future roadway as shown in the Grandview plan, and I'm not sure what that was referring to.
I can answer that. What... Let me see if I can find L-100 here. What the... In some of the submissions, it was, I believe, the adjustment of the off-ramp from Highway 100 that, you know, adjusting it to Vernon in a fashion like this.
I think the plan envisions the possibility of kind of squaring that corner a little bit and making it less of a curve. Although that clearly is not... It's not a change that's imminent. Right.
And we'd certainly like to see it, but, you know, give us a little more buffer, but...
Commissioner Carr.
I just had a question. Again, kind of reiterating Commissioner Forrest's comments about the sidewalk and exactly how many trees would need to be removed. Just, is there some topography issues there? Is that sloped towards the road of Vernon Avenue?
There is a bit of topography issue there where, you know, the first sidewalk follows along, you know, directly along the road. As we work further back to the site, it is more near flush as you are on the east side of the site. As the road raises for the rail bridge, it does become a difference of multiple feet when you're on the west side of the site as well at that point. And that's why we have an internal sidewalk to... That's down some stairs to adjust the more internal workings of the site.
But I'm assuming though that the proposal, I don't know if that was from the city engineer, to have a sidewalk and have that moved back so that there can be some green space near the road, that that's possible, it's feasible to do. They wouldn't have recommended it otherwise. Your concern is primarily removal of the vegetation?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, I guess if we don't know what is actually being removed, I do agree. I think that the concept of having the sidewalk away from the road with the green space is attractive. So, you know, unless you can give us some arguments as to why we would not approve that.
I think throughout the city, we're trying to get sidewalks away from being directly adjacent on the roads as a matter of safety issues for pedestrians, as well as, you know, the effect on traffic by being a calmer-looking environment.
We're generally looking at it right now that... And I can understand that point for the city as well. But we're generally looking at it that this is kind of out of condition of the whole rest of the area right now as the rest of the sidewalks are adjacent to the road currently. And we're feeling like it's adding something kind of, in our mind, negative to the buffer space that we're going to have to our residents and to their outdoor space as well. But just, you know, five feet less of that opportunity for, you know, more solid vegetation is just a concern of ours. And then just looking at the, you know, the other areas around it and being between the bridges that, you know, this would create a unique situation here by having that boulevard then.
Okay. And then I have one other question on the monument. What is the name for this development? I was just curious, have it had a name? What the name was going to be on the monument?
Okay. The Row Edina West.
Pardon me?
The Row Edina West.
All right, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Platter?
I'll say just to kind of pile on that sidewalk question a little bit. I would agree with my fellow commissioners beside me here that I think it's a reasonable thing from the city to ask, especially as it's a PUD here. And also, you know, the forest site is there to think about how that gets redeveloped up there. Just because the sidewalks are right to the street now doesn't mean they're right. I mean, we've talked about that in the Grandview area of trying to make that more pedestrian-friendly. And also, you haven't shown that what trees would be saved. So I, you know, between all those, I would not agree with your comment on that. So, thanks.
Mr. Pelkowitz, could you pull up... So you've got 100 there. Let's... If you can slide that down a little bit. I have one question about now the traffic pattern within the driveways. It looked like there was some arrows. Are you suggesting that it'll be a one-way in on the westernmost driveway and a one-way out on the easternmost driveway?
Correct, yes. We're looking at that traffic pattern, one way here, one way through this zone here, and then two-way parking to... Or two-way just for these back couple of units.
So for those two units that are on the westernmost part adjacent to Vernon, they would have in and out, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then if you can flip to the next sheet to 102. So two sheets down, I guess.
Sure.
I just want to make sure, because I haven't been able to kind of discern the dimensions here. And this is kind of a blown-up version of the Vernon Avenue frontage. And I wonder if you could just give us, you know, maybe starting at the street and working back some of the dimensions here in terms of the sidewalk and then the green space and then the patio. And I'm trying to get a sense of how far from the property line and from the street the front of these units are.
I'm going to move us to L-100 because I have some dimensions on that sheet.
Maybe they were just too small.
Yeah, they are. There's not a lot, but...
If you could just walk us through those, I think that would be helpful for... I'm not quite getting my mind around it.
Okay. So starting on the east side of the site, you know, it varies some as the buildings move in and out here. We're roughly 35-foot, 10-feet from the property line to the edge of the curb. And then we have an additional seven feet in total from the building. So we're roughly about from the corner of this building to the edge of the sidewalk here, we're starting at 43 feet as kind of an overall amount.
So that 35-10 dimension isn't from the corner of the building?
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct. It's from the corner of the building.
Okay. So you got almost 36 feet from that nearest that...
That's our nearest building point.
Southeasternly-most building corner.
Correct.
All right.
Through this zone then, I believe it's a six-foot sidewalk here.
So regardless, you know, before we even talk about whether the sidewalk is butted up against the street or not, we're talking about six-foot sidewalk?
I believe so. I don't have that for certain.
I didn't see that in the engineer's comments either.
Right now. It's 53 inches? Okay. So correction on that. It's roughly 53 inches wide, and it tightens up as you get to the bridge as well.
So where does the bridge start?
The bridge roughly begins here.
So...
I... We didn't... I guess we haven't accurately drawn the bridge at this point. It's not, since it's far enough off the site.
So the sidewalk is what, Mr. Hunt, you were saying 54-inch-wide sidewalk? So four and a half feet? Not six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As I stated, I didn't know for certain at that point.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand. So that... And then how much space do we have between... This is all still in the right-of-way, I assume. So the remaining... So what do we have about?
Roughly about 20, 20 feet from there.
So from the street, the edge, from the curb basically to the property line is...
From the curb to the property line is roughly 25.
That's about 25 feet. We're using about four and a half for sidewalk and then 20-plus for the rest of that green space, right? And then is there another... What is that ribbon that's just inside the property line?
We have an internal walk there for the residents to... It makes up the grade and gives two access points to the public sidewalk from there.
So maybe start from the front of the units. If you're going to come out the front door of the unit along Vernon, help me understand how you're going to get to the street.
Sure. So we'll take this unit as the example.
Okay.
You come out your front walk here. You have a generous patio area here.
And is that at street grade or is that above or below?
It varies along the site. It's closer to street grade on the east end. As you go west, it becomes below street grade.
Okay.
And it's at... On the west end, it is at least... It's at least about five... I think it's about five feet below street grade at that point on the furthest west.
And is the property line then a retaining wall or is it... What do you see there as you walk out your door?
We do have... We do need retaining wall, a short retaining wall that's just, I believe, three feet in height for the first bit here.
So for instance, for that westernmost unit, you come out, you've got kind of a little garden patio area there that has a four-foot, three-four-foot wall?
Yes, and then the shared path is rising with that and gets you access to the sidewalk.
So where are the two ways that you can act... Or where are the ways that you can access the street?
So here?
Yeah.
And here at this point.
So just two places out of there that you can access the street? Or vice versa, that the street can access your front door?
Yes, and for a majority of, you know, Vernon isn't... I mean, it's... We're trying to create Vernon as an architectural front door where, I mean, a majority of the guests and everyone else would be arriving through the rear side of this with no parking along Vernon. It's not really... It's not really, it's not feasible other than a few guests a year to be approaching that as the, the true front door at that point.
Yeah, certainly not with parked cars. I'm not envisioning that. But I am trying to, you know, consistent with engaging the Grand View neighborhood. I mean, I think this is a real opportunity to have a pedestrian friendly. It may not be right now, but we're trying to work toward making that a place that people might walk up to, that certainly the residents would walk out that way and cross.
Well, that's, that's kind of the, a little bit of what we're, we're playing between the, the two pieces here, that we want this to be very welcoming and opening, and open to the, the general area above, but we are just creating a few landscape buffers, not enough that it's like a wall of green at any point, but buffers so there is a, a little bit of quietness as you'd be sitting on your porch with the, the heavy traffic along Vernon. So we're, we're kind of walking a fine line between those two issues.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I'm a little confused on one piece of this. So when, when they're coming out of the, the front of their, their unit, and you have this roughly three-foot tall retaining wall, is that right?
It's, well, the, the wall is, you know, from, from this unit here, it's 20 feet out from the, from the front door of the unit.
Extending 20 feet out. But, but the height of the retaining wall is...
It's, it's a low wall. It's just basically mimics grade.
Okay, so it's...
As grades going up, it's just mimicking grade.
You can walk, you can walk literally out the front then?
Oh, yes. You can, you, you walk out here, it's two steps down, you have your entire patio, and then there's the, the, the inner walk that's shared with these units. And at that point, then you're, you know, moving on to the more public realm at that point.
Okay, and it's all fully accessible then? I was just confused by that.
But the two access ingress egress points would go up from the front doors to the street?
This one certainly would. This one is about roughly flush or a one-foot grade change on the, on the east end.
In terms of stormwater, I know the city engineer talked about bio-retention areas. Can you remind me, have you done that? Is that part of what you're planning here?
Part of the civil package of, of this project was in, in, been working with the city engineer and will continue to do so, that, you know, we slowed the rate of, of the, the water moving into the city sewer is what we're doing with our, with our tank system.
So you're going to capture on-site and then keep the rate the same?
Yes.
Now, how about, he also mentioned permeable pavers. Is that part of the notion for the driveways?
It's, we don't, we, with us just recently getting the letter, we haven't addressed that at this point yet.
Okay.
It's currently not included, but something we've been considering.
I mean, my own perspective is I think, you know, that's, you're putting a lot more hard cover. That's one of the density issues. We just have to make sure we're managing the stormwater both from a quality management perspective as well as from a drainage perspective. We've had a lot of discussions at this table about drainage and flood prevention and stormwater management. We want you to be conscientious about that. Other questions before we move to the public hearing? Commissioner Forrest?
I'm just curious why the east sidewalk access to the public sidewalk is pointing toward the highway?
It's just to keep it flush, kind of along grade, and then work to the, work to the, a crossing at this point, to meet, to meet the rest of the, the continued sidewalk as you get to the Highway 100 bridge.
That was kind of puzzling to me early on too, because in the drawings that you provide, you show pedestrians walking along that triangle land that just doesn't seem like the best place to hang out, so. But I like the idea that people are, would be using both sides of the street. It's not that, it's just that, it just seemed a little bit, the sidewalk, the side, public sidewalk actually ends right now, right there, drops off, so that's why I was asking.
Mr. Hunt, did you have something to add?
If I could, Dan Hunt, President of Hunt Associates, it's a very difficult condition here, and we have to plan that the exit never changes, as much as we hope it does. So as Chris said, we're trying, we're trying to make the architecture of the building show, but at the same time give some, give people some privacy in their front yards. And it's, it's, it's very hard. We spent a lot of time on the landscaping here. We actually had a, we, our internal sidewalk actually was a concrete sidewalk at one point. Then we realized we had to take out about a dozen trees, so we, now it's just a crushed rock path that meanders through that. And it's adequate for what we need there, but we're, we're, you know, we moved the buildings closer to Vernon at the request of both the Planning Commission and the Council. And we were dealing with what we thought was the condition was the sidewalk was at the curb as it is up and down Vernon Avenue. To push the sidewalk back towards the units takes away some of that buffer from the unit. And it makes the, those front yards and those garden areas we're trying to devise for those people, it, it degrades them substantially. And that's what I want you to think about. We, we should have counted the trees before we came in, but there are substantial trees in the city right-of-way there.
And so you say it degrades the, tell me more about, because it's, I mean, we're talking about a sidewalk. This is, it's not the vehicular traffic, this is pedestrian traffic.
But, but if we, if we, if we, if we move the sidewalk in, it, the grade doesn't work. So we would have to do a, we'd have to do a retaining wall the entire length of the property, increase the grades along here, and then put the sidewalk in. So we're not, we're...
I guess, one more time, more slowly for me.
Okay.
I don't understand how the grade doesn't work when you move the sidewalk.
Because, because the grade falls off severely here, hardly all here, but it falls off all along here. So in order to move the sidewalk in and create a five-foot green space here means we have to do some type of retaining wall along there. And that means we're going to take out vegetation. So at the, at the ground level, we're, we're trying to somewhat mask the front yard so they have some privacy, because the cars come, you know what the cars are like coming off 100. But higher up, the architecture of the building show through to the street. So, as I said, it's a difficult, it's a difficult spot, and we're, we're trying to put, we're trying to get people to sit in chairs on a busy street. And I don't want to move a sidewalk in five feet and take out a lot of vegetation to accomplish that. Plus, as you, we realize, so then the sidewalk would come off the bridge, go in five feet, follow here, and this is where, right about here is where the crossing is, the other side of the road. It doesn't accomplish a lot. And it, it deteriorates the, our space significantly.
Okay. If there's more questions, because I do want to go to public hearing and then we can have more discussion about it, but...
I just want to make a comment on that. I don't know if we have enough tonight to know about that. I kind of said before, you know, there's a lot of hand sketching here, so I don't know if we have enough to...
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Just curious, I mean, there's apparently a five-foot setback and then the sidewalk starts. Is that a requirement, that there be a, for sidewalks, that there always be five feet of sod and then the sidewalk?
It's not a requirement. It's something that the city is moving towards, the city engineer supports. That's within its memo.
Living streets.
In order for, for safety purposes as well as to provide a buffer between the street and the sidewalk and to have planting areas and rain gardens perhaps.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicants? Commissioner Forrest?
I also want to comment that, looking at this one, it's a little bit deceptive too, because if you, the sidewalk, the public access sidewalk on the western side is six feet wide, and so the grass zone will be much narrower than what has been indicated with the, the added drawing there. So it, I understand that, I totally get your point of view on this. I understand where you're coming from in that. Also, the public sidewalk right now ends before your eastern property line. It doesn't extend off along that triangle, so. I just, I just want to be clear on the picture here that it's not quite that dramatic. But I do understand there are grade issues and everything else, so.
You're, you are correct. The sidewalk ends there, crosses, and then picks up again.
One other question that I realized I missed was if you could go back to L-100. I know there was some commentary from the fire marshal about the width of the drive aisles being 20 feet, and it looks like L-100 still has them at 18?
Yes, and I, I want to note that both the, the, the city engineer memo is from six days ago, where this was submitted one month ago, and the fire marshal's note is from about 12 days ago as well. So it's, you know, since we've already submitted...
So you just haven't had a chance to incorporate that? Do you have an objection to making that 20 feet?
We do not. We, we think we, we have some issues to potentially work out with. We may lose some with parking. Currently, we have three parallel stalls here, and that is kind of our, our current issue right now, but we'd like to continue to, to work with the fire marshal to, to meet the needs at this point, where we feel the, the 20 he's requested, where we, we currently have 18, with the valeted curbs, edge to edge of paving is actually 20 feet. And the 18 is to the, the low point of the valley. So we, we want to continue to work with the fire marshal to make sure that those needs are met.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Polkowicz.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anyone from the public who has comments on this item to come forward and share them. If you could give us your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Mary Hartschewy. I live at 5016 Edinbrook Lane, and I was here tonight to listen, but two things came up tonight that I'd like to comment on. The first is the sidewalk. And I have to say, I'm a pretty regular participant in walking that sidewalk. I volunteer here at City Hall and I walk home regularly. And it is quite the dangerous route, so you're, you're, you're jumping between exits and... So while as much as I'd like a green space, I think it's not very realistic to think that you could have a green space and have marketable townhouses. I mean, marketable in the point that people are going to feel like they've got some living space. And I hope that both sides come together to figure that out, because, you know, Vernon is a busy street, and if you bought a townhouse there and faced any kind of ish, any kind of buffer you could have would be great. So I hope you can all work together to stop, to figure that out. Also, in maintaining a green space, if you walked from here tomorrow and walked towards the, the Holiday Gas Station, nobody maintains that. So you have trash, cigarette butts, you name it. It's, it's not a pretty sight. So I think we're all fooling ourselves to think that if we have five feet of green space, it's going to look any better than just brown dirt. So consider that, what's going to happen there. Second is, I'd really like to understand what's going to happen with that one-way in, one-way out. Right now, as I understand it, all traffic will be going out on 49th Street. And I don't know who decides, but I'd like to see a stop sign there, because you've got the rest of us that live in that area coming up the hill. There's a blind spot, and so we all can't come up the hill together. Under perfect conditions and great weather, you know, I guess we'll all be civilized. But if you've got snow and ice and we're making a run from where I live, I mean, literally, we've had to back up to get up that hill. And I come up that hill and have another car coming out there or another car coming down, it's just dangerous. Plus, we have buses and et cetera. So please consider signage in that area.
So you're talking about where 49th intersects Brookside?
No, I'm talking about where 49th will, where the exit of the property, I don't have a map here, but where the exit of the property, you know, one-way in, one-way out. So if I'm coming out, I'm exiting on 49th. So on 49th, as I'm coming out of the development, I'd like to see a stop sign there for people exiting the development, to just make sure that they're not exiting blindly onto 49th. Is that clear?
As someone's coming from the neighborhood and using 49th to get out to Brookside?
Right, because it's a one-way in, one-way out. I mean, you'll see the cars coming over the railroad tracks coming straight through, but what you won't necessarily see is who's coming up that hill to exit out.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And, you know, I just, I'd also like to thank the developers. I think, you know, the word to modify, and I think through this process, I've really seen this come from, you know, in my view, a disaster of really a too-big a project to something that I think now is, we're all going to feel really proud of. So I like this fine-tuning, I like the way the project works, I like the questions being asked, and I really think that people have been respectful of the process. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, so the public hearing is closed. Further discussion? Commissioner Forrest?
I just want us to keep in mind that this is a PUD project, and the goal there is to have solutions that work for both sides, not just the city and not just for the developer. We want, we want to work together on this. But that said, then we are then keeping our, our goals in mind too as we do this. Thanks to the developer and, and everybody for adapting things along the way. I second that. It's such a much nicer appearing project to me, anyway. I am in favor of the engineering director's five-foot side boulevard along that, along Vernon Avenue. Part of our goals along that entire street and, and throughout the city are to gradually change many of our roadways so that they are more pedestrian-friendly. And that's good not only for safety, I mean, that was a huge issue on Valley View and on Wooddale and everything, that they wanted to move those sidewalks back, but the pedestrian experience. And also, I mean, it's a balancing act. Yeah, your, your tenants may not have, or your owners may not have quite as much privacy, but it's five feet and that it, it has its own buffering thing. In addition, it's, it's that trade-off between privacy versus engagement going both ways, the engagement of that property with the public space as well. I, and, and since you are increasing the hardscape so much, there, like Planner Ocker said, that, that there's a lot of things that can be done in a boulevard if need be regarding water management too, whether it's rain gardens or just having that permeable surface there. And your own words, you said, you know how cars can come off 100? Well, exactly. That's, that's, that works both ways as well, because it is a crazy place for pedestrians. It's uninviting. It's, it's there and it's great that it's there and it's accessed, but it's not an inviting place to, you wouldn't seek it out in order to walk through the neighborhood. As far as maintenance of that boulevard, it would be the responsibility of the property owner, just as it is for single-family homes. You maintain your boulevard, you maintain, you know, you shovel the sidewalk, whatever. Along this street, I'm pretty sure the city would be taking care of the snow, but it would, you know, the maintenance would be the responsibility of, of the property owner, I would think. I strongly, strongly, strongly object to the monument sign. This isn't a high-density residential area. When I was looking at another property that we're going to be looking at tonight, I was driving through and seeing what was in the area in southwest Edina, and it's appropriate, I think it's much more appropriate in a high-density residential area to have a monument sign like that, because what they're doing is they're identifying small neighborhoods. But because this is being plopped right into the middle of a, of a, an R1 neighborhood with, you know, one-story, two-story and a half homes, a lot of them, and it's, it's a much more serene space. I think that's much, way, way too commercial, and to me, it's offensive. I, I can see having, if anything, very, very subtle signage as far as identifying it, just as, you know, would we put, it's, you're not, you're not identifying a whole neighborhood. That's your development, but it's their neighborhood. So it's different than when you are developing an entire subdivision or an entire apartment complex in a, in a high desert, high-density area. So that's my skew on things. It's my personal bugaboo, but that was, that's the main thing, I think. Thanks.
Couple of other, we did get, we got some communications in writing that were part of the... Couple of other, we did get, we got some communications in writing that were part of the packet, and there was one tonight on our desks. And I think it's from Mary Altavilla.
That's me.
Oh, it is? Okay, sorry. Well, I hope I got, I got to almost all your questions, I think. All right. But the one that I didn't get to was the noise wall.
Yeah, and I have...
Can you, can you just come up so that anybody watching can hear what? Tell me about the noise wall in the neighborhood.
It's Chris, right? Thank you very much. Chris responded to me, and I appreciate your getting back to me. We are slated to have the MinDOT wall, sound wall on Highway 100. We're number five right now, and so we're keeping our fingers crossed, hoping we stay in that lineup or maybe bump ahead, depending on others' needs.
So that's going to run down the west side of 100?
Well, that's a good question. We're really not sure. We're not sure. It's going to connect from where, at least the talk now is from where it stopped, on the bridge, and then connect up through the exit, depending on where the exit is deemed. And how far up that way it would connect, we're just not sure. And talking to Wayne, he's not sure either. I think it, you know, it's money and how the sound projects. And, you know, it's their dollar this time around. It's not, it's not residentially funded. So they'll be deciding that.
But that would be, whatever sound mitigation is benefit to the single-family homes as well as to the residents of the townhomes?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think what I read in the notes was the, I don't know, it was the engineer that talked about the windows. And if there was going to be any special mitigation done by the developer in order to make those frontage townhouses more attractive. That's, that was my take on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your nice checklist. You help me ask good questions. So the sidewalks. Here's, here's a thought. I am, I'm sympathetic. In general, I would like to see us with that boulevard buffer between the sidewalk, between the street and the sidewalk. But I do, I do get the point that there's going to be a bridge kind of on either end of this property, and the sidewalk will be right up against the side of the bridge. I wonder if we might accomplish the same thing we're trying, you know, that to me, it's partly aesthetic, but there is lots of green space on the other side. It's partly safety. And you just feel less safe if you're right against a street. I think you can mitigate some of that by making it larger. So instead of a four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk, maybe it's a six-foot sidewalk, but it's up against the street. So now you feel like you're able to have a safer walk along that space with, than the green space. And I appreciate Mr. Hunt's comments about the topography falling away and that there's a lot of grading that might need to be done there. But I'm, and normally, I would, I would want to have that boulevard space, but I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense in this situation. I get the balancing act you're trying to play with the front doors. I want that to be a desirable spot. It may take a little while for it to be more desirable as the rest of the neighborhood changes. And so I'm okay with kind of that courtyard feel outside the front door and some additional buffering. So that's one thought I had on the sidewalk. The drive aisle width, I think we need to do something with the drive aisle width to make sure we're satisfying the fire marshal. And it sounds like, Mr. Polkowicz, you have some drawing to do to see how you can deal with the surface parking to make that happen. The stormwater retention, it sounds like, as well. You've received those comments. I'm hearing you say you're committed to to not changing the rate of runoff and capturing it on the site and percolating it into the stormwater system at the appropriate rate. Permeable pavers is another recommendation that the that the city engineer made. I was pleased to hear Mr. Hunt talking about changing that pathway to kind of a crushed limestone or a more permeable surface, I think would be a good, is a good approach. How about the stop sign exiting the property? Mr. Hunt or Mr. Polkowicz, you have any comment on? I get that issue coming in and out of there. It's for that neighborhood.
Yeah. You know, the grade change here is severe.
So it goes downhill right there?
Goes downhill. And so I understand it completely. So if, if, I'm not a traffic engineer. If, if, if you think a stop sign would help there, we will certainly do it. But, you know, in my mind, it's no different than people exiting their driveway.
Right.
You know, they're going to, they're going to roll through it. But, excuse me, if they want it, I will do it. If I could go back to the comment about the monument, it was, it was a byproduct of trying to hide the electrical equipment from the rest of the neighborhood. So we, there was a wall there. We put a wall up to hide, so the neighbors didn't have to look at the electrical equipment. And then we thought, oh, we'll put a sign up there.
So some of your mechanical, the electrical?
Yeah, the transformers are there.
Oh, all right.
Okay. So we're, we're, and then it was the first time that I saw the letters. It will not be that big. It'll be very, very, very subtle. Because we don't want it to detract from the architecture of the building. Your point is well taken.
I would assume also, and Ms. Harchaby's comments, I was, I was first thinking about as 49th Street exits. But Chris, maybe that's just a traffic management. Is there already a stop sign there or not? I can't remember as it comes out of 49th Street onto Brookside?
Here, yes.
After the railroad track? Okay. Because coming down that hill or going up that hill is, at least is challenging, I'm sure, in the wintertime as coming around the other corner. So the monument sign was next on my list. All right, so I'm glad you got that. Commissioner Forrest.
I appreciate that, I really do. Thank you. I also wanted to, to be fair, I think that having, the first iteration of this thing, I did not like at all. It was so big. But now it's looking so much more palatable. And I think having the project there and just having a landscaped, groomed space there is going to have its own effect on the traffic coming off 100. And I do appreciate that. I mean, it's going to be a nice, much nicer welcome to that neighborhood than, you know, just unkempt buckthorn that's there now. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Paz.
Comment here. I agree with much of what's been said. And I think the project's come a long way in a positive direction since we first saw it. Thank you. Nice work. And I just wanted to highlight one thing which we have not mentioned yet, thinking ahead to the whole Grandview development. The neighborhood that sits to the north of this site, right now, to walk to Grandview is very difficult. Up that hill and the winding road and this simple sidewalk with a few steps that parallels the railroad tracks on the west side of this site is going to be heavily used. I think it's a wonderful, simple move. That's just a very nice piece of this project. So good work on that, as well as all the other things folks have mentioned.
If I can chime in on that. Is that, on this, on this plan that we have in front of us, is that property lined right up against the right-of-way of the railroad? Or is there some other space in between? Because I was looking at another plaque.
There was, there was, there originally was a right-of-way for the street.
Oh, that's right.
Because of the P.
Has it been vacated, or is that part of what?
It's been vacated.
Okay.
So our property goes to the, goes to the, it's not a, it's not a railroad right-of-way. It's, they own the property.
Well, right.
They own the property. And...
But that's the boundary we're looking at?
That's the boundary. It is, the railroad property is exceptionally wide from just south of Vernon to just north of 49th. So we, we approached them, excuse me. We approached them about, I think they have 18 and a half extra feet. And we approached them about purchasing it, but they've kind of gone dark on us.
We've...
We, we would like, we would like to acquire it because we'd like to control in terms of landscaping.
Yeah, and I have kind of an ulterior motive. I'm on the, I may be tilting at windmills, but I have this idea that somehow we can get bicycles from Grandview underneath the bridge and behind the Holiday Station and out onto Brookside without having to go on Vernon and take a left turn in Interlaken, so.
Well, there is ample land there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. All right, other comments or questions? What now? Go ahead.
With that, I would like to make a motion to approve, subject to the staff conditions. And I would also like to add again that this is subject to the residential construction management plan, since it is across the road from that. And that would, that would be it for my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so with respect to these things that we identified, where are we on the sidewalk with your motion?
I don't really know, because there isn't enough here. I mean, my suggestion is that that looks into further and take that to counsel. Is that, you know?
So in terms of the...
In other words?
Because we've had a couple of different comments here. The initial suggestions were we insist on the grass and the green buffer between the street and the sidewalk. I suggested maybe we ask for the sidewalk to be six feet wide instead of four-and-a-half feet wide, but let it butt up against the street. Do you have a perspective on that?
My perspective would be to use the buffer as much as you can. And I don't know where that times out with the retaining wall. So I guess I would, almost like a combination to be able to use the grade as much. And then where you start getting to the retaining wall, then are you just doing a sidewalk? I don't know. I don't, I mean, I don't have enough here to, unless someone feels really strongly on that.
Mr. Chair, I guess just to add a point of view on that. I think knowing that this public right-of-way is going to change, hopefully it'll change soon along Vernon. I'm not a huge advocate for adding a buffer. I could live with it even as it is today.
You know, the other comment I'd make about that is I don't know that in the long run, this segment of Vernon, it's still going to have traffic because you're going to have to get, you're going to have to get vehicles that are exiting Highway 100 South and want to get to Interlaken, are going to come up, take a right turn, take another right turn after the bridge onto Interlaken to go back into those neighborhoods back there. So I, well, I'm hoping that in general Vernon Avenue is going to become more of a city street than a, than a high traffic. It is going to have. That turn is still going to be there. There are still going to be vehicles there, so. And in the wintertime, that's going to mean a lot of plowing of that road and dumping it onto where that boulevard is as well. Commissioner Forrest and then Commissioner Carr.
Now I'm starting to recall something about long-term considerations for Vernon of actually narrowing the number of lanes down possibly and doing a lot of different changes there. So that would be an unknown, that it would be hard to go after right now.
Right, so on Vernon, there's a lot of that discussion from Interlaken further southwest to try to narrow that, create more pedestrian and bicycle space. But you've got some traffic challenges before that because you're really dealing with, you're dealing with some pass-through traffic that doesn't want to go to the Grandview area, wants to get through there, either to the freeway or away from the freeway. And you've got the bridge that is kind of boxing in what you can do in any event. So it is a bit of a fluid situation.
And to make a big investment in upgrading it only to tear it back out in five years, it doesn't make as much sense to me.
Commissioner Carr.
Did the city engineer recommend this? Is that where this?
Yes, that's where the recommendation came from.
Well, I guess I would, I don't know the rationale behind the city engineer's decision on this, but certainly the boulevard is consistent with the living streets concept. I would recommend approval of this with that condition in it, that there be the boulevard. And if the applicant would like to go to the city council with some additional information, they're certainly free to do that, to convince the city council otherwise on this issue. But I do think that the boulevard's consistent with the living streets concept. And we'd simply, I think the city engineer, we shouldn't second-guess the city engineer on this.
So just to be clear, does the motion include the city engineer's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, and the secondaire? Okay. So I think, you know, to the extent we move that direction, we've given you some ideas about it. I think a six-foot wide sidewalk right against it, you know, creates the safety feel that improves it. I think that's a good compromise, but it...
I think you now have the opportunity to go and...
Make that pitch.
Make that pitch and figure out what's going on. Because I just feel uncomfortable doing a lot either way because of this. We're just doing napkin sketches in a way right here.
And I also want to make sure that, so we've got the city engineer's recommendations. We've got the staff report recommendations. Is there any other document we're relying on here? The fire marshal. The fire marshal's, thank you, Jackie. I knew, I knew it was there. I just couldn't draw it up. So this includes that as well for the 20-foot drive aisles? The motion?
Yes. All of the city recommendations.
Good, all right. I think I've got it corralled. Any other comments or discussion? Commissioner Carr.
I just wanted to comment. Again, I do think it's a much improved plan. Architecturally pleasing, it addresses the density issues, traffic flow issues, et cetera. And I think it's a great transition from residential to the commercial area.
And it might have the distinction of being the beginning of the transformation of the Grandview neighborhood, so. All right, so hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And Ms. Harchaby, thank you for being here. All right. Next is, we're on to reports and recommendations. First of which is a sketch plan review for Frownshue Commercial Real Estate Group, 5801 Edina Industrial Boulevard, Edina, Minnesota.
Planning Commission is asked to consider a sketch plan proposal to redevelop 5801 Edina Industrial Boulevard from office use to retail uses, including a drive-through. The subject property is located north of Edina Industrial Boulevard and east of Metro Boulevard, as highlighted. It currently consists of an office use, the realty house. And it is currently zoned planned office district, as highlighted. It is, in the comprehensive plan, guided for office to neighborhood. And it would, it's currently guided for office. And it would be, it would require a comprehensive plan change to neighborhood commercial. Now, across the street from this particular property, there's Burger King and a small retail strip center. That actually is currently guided industrial. So with the sketch plan moving forward, if it does move forward, there would be a comprehensive plan amendment that would be required for the property for commercial use. Staff would recommend that the properties across the street be included in that comprehensive plan amendment because currently they're inconsistent. This area is guided, it's one of our areas guided for change. Again, here is the existing layout of the property currently. It is an office zone. They would like to change that to commercial retail with the drive-through. The drive-through is located along the south side. There really isn't going to be any change to the footprint of the building. That will remain the same. The requirements of rezoning from POD 1, Plan Office District 1, to PCV 2, Plan Commercial District, a comprehensive... a comprehensive guide plan amendment from office to commercial, and again, would recommend including the same guide plan change for the property to the south, currently guided industrial. There would be a parking stall variance required. The city standard for a retail use would be 71 spaces. The proposed and existing site provides 57 spaces. However, if there's any restaurant seating, that would require then even more additional parking. Additional identified issues that staff highlighted in the staff report, the drive-through in the front of the building, staff would request that the applicant consider moving it to the back of the building. That elimination of existing western access to the Edina Industrial Boulevard, this access is actually too close to the intersection currently. There is concern over the lack of parking space for conversion to a retail use. The shortage could further increase if, again, a restaurant use is put within the site. And then circulation, if the drive-through is moved from the back, there may not be adequate area for two-way circulation around the site. Office land uses are located both to the north and west, so you'd have a commercial use that would be directly adjacent to other office uses and as you go further to the north and to the west. A traffic and parking study would need it to be completed to determine impacts on the adjacent roadways and if there would be adequate parking provided. So this is a sketch plan. I don't know if I can answer too many questions about it, because we don't have an application, and that's about as much detail as we've got. So I will stop, and the applicants are here to present and listen to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Chris. Gentlemen, come on forward. I'm assuming it's you, because I don't see anybody else out there. Come on up, introduce yourselves.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, you're probably going to have to use the handheld microphone, because the...
Okay, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. David Anderson with Fraunchu Commercial Real Estate.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. And Nick Sporidis is with Sporidis Reiner, Architect. He's handling the site planning and some of our architectural studies. And as your staff mentioned tonight, we understand this is a sketch plan review, so we're not here to propose a site plan. And really what we're here to talk with you about is revisioning for property, to talk about the area land use context, which was touched on briefly, but I might make mention of a couple of other things that we're thinking about. And really to address this as a starting point about really how this property wants to serve the area, the context of this area, which is a fairly sizable employment center with one corporate center and a number of office developments in and around this area and other retail that your staff mentioned across the street. And just to touch on that for a moment, in the circled property, which is the property that we're discussing this evening, this is all PCD 2-zoned property. But as your staff mentioned, it is currently guided industrial, so that regiding to a neighborhood commercial district would be necessary for that property to the south. And this property could be brought into that effort if it went forward on a formal basis. But really, what we would look at is making that zoning of that property consistent with the properties across the street, PCD 2. So that's just the general context of the discussion about the zoning application. And why is that? Because the uses in the PCD 2 are the types of uses we would envision having an interest, being a service-type amenity to the area, whether that be restaurant, whether that be other kinds of daytime activity services that businesspeople, pedestrians and the like would appreciate in this area. So that is the vision. Could it include the current tenants' office uses? Certainly, but we would see that demand being there. If you do spend any time over there today, you do see pedestrians, you do see a lot of activity to the retail center to the south. It's just a very active area, and we want to reposition this property to be responsive to that. Maybe just give a bit of a glimpse of some of our ideas just about the visual sort of conditions of the property. Again, thinking about this from just a pure zoning standpoint, what we would like to see is the opportunity to revitalize this property. That can't happen without the economic impetus to create that. Some of the things you were talking about earlier this evening with other proposals, pedestrian orientation. There are no sidewalks on this property today. We certainly would see the ability to bring more of a pedestrian access to this site, both on the south side of the building and the west side of the building, along Metro Boulevard and along 77th Street. Improving the landscaping, just simple treatments like ornamental trees, low-level landscaping that just brings a little bit more presence to that corner. And some architectural treatments, whether that's awnings or the use of stone and other types of materials, really to repurpose and reposition this property and create an energy that it deserves. It hasn't had that for some time, so we see that being an opportunity. I think the comments on the layout of the site plan that you did look at in your packet, here's just a bit more of a colored sort of version of that. We understand, and again, if this is in the context of zoning, that coming back through a formal site plan review, that we would have to address things like parking and the mix of uses and how much parking demand that drives. We certainly would expect that we would meet those needs, certainly from the user standpoint, but also from code. Stacking in the, this is one concept for how drive-through could work. We certainly understand we'd need to do some traffic study and understand, you know, how exiting and ingress and egress all works. But this, again, was a starting point, knowing we're here to talk from a sketch perspective, high level. Our starting point really is, do we believe that the context of this site fits within the PCD, which is in that zone across the street and within the neighborhood commercial context? And that really is our starting point, both from a near-term perspective, which is the building in its current condition to, say, a 10-, 20-year horizon. You know, where do we go with that long-term? And there are opportunities to invest and to, as we've said, re-energize this property through some of the kinds of ideas that we've prepared here. So, that is our starting point. We're looking for some feedback on an informal basis, and appreciate your time and interest. And we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Questions for Mr. Anderson? Commissioner Pla...
Questions, comments? So, you know, I like your overall concept here. You know, across the street, there is all that service synergy, I guess, if you will. So assuming this would be kind of offshoot of that. And I know there's a caribou across the street, too, so I'm guessing might what go in here. But the comment I have on the site, I was driving around here the other day, and, you know, it's a really, because of where you're at and the stoplights, it's a hard site to get in and out of, in a way. So, I would agree with the city for the most part. You know, I think if you're going to have a drive-through, it should go in the rear somehow here versus the front, because I'm not sure how. And also, consider closing that west entry along the Industrial Boulevard there. West. The out going along there. And just because I don't think it's really practical right now, today, how it's set up with the traffic that's going to sit at that light and get people out. And, you know, just from an internal circulation, my other comment is something to consider. So the corner of Metro and Industrial, you know, maybe that's more of a pedestrian plaza or something there versus having, I don't know if you need circulation all around the building. Is there a way to make that, again, place for someone to sit or to kind of energize that corner from a pedestrian standpoint? Just a thought there. And moving the drive-through round to the back, because I think pushing the drive-through there, you're going to have a lot of circulation issues anyway, that I'm not sure how, if that would even work at that spot. So, those are my comments, just my glance at this overall, looking at it, but something to think about.
I'd like to respond to your drive-through question. The hard part about putting the drive-through on this north side is that the cars would be going this direction, adjacent to the building. The cars entering would be going that direction into the site, and the cars exiting, so we would have three lanes of traffic in order to have the driver on the proper side. So, we did take a study, we did draw the picture when we met with Carrie. It gets, I think it poses certain risks to people crossing over, and it just doesn't work very well. The drive, this is probably, of all the drive-through options we have, this is probably the best opportunity to get some stacking.
I'd be concerned you don't have enough stacking in that option either. So, that's, I guess I didn't mention that before, but, you know, if it is a coffee house or something, you could have 20 cars there.
No, trust me, I've done enough of these drive-throughs to know. It's just that anytime you go on this side of the building or this side, the drive-through's on the wrong side of the traffic, so you've got cars, two going that one and one coming down the middle, so it gets to be difficult.
There's some opportunities here.
We have, exactly, we have some work to do in order to, when we finally decide how that's going to take shape, believe me, we'll study that.
I think it's fair to say that the stacking is a hot-button issue, given some of the experiences. I know the city council, there are several members on the city council who get regular calls about stacking on drive-throughs, so I think that's an issue you're going to have to figure out.
As an architect, stacking has a negative effect on the business owners, too, because if there's not enough room, then the drive-through becomes a dead zone. And if it takes too long to get through, nobody goes to the drive. So it works both ways.
Or if it's spilling out into the street, people drive by and say, ah, it's too busy, I'm going to the next place.
Along with that, just like it is just right over here, how about going through the middle of the building with your drive-through? Is that an option? Anyway, just something to think about.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yeah, just on the subject of the drive-throughs, I was looking at it kind of along the same lines of what you're talking about. You've got traffic going the wrong way, and you're on the wrong side. So, there must be some kind of tried-and-true way that you deal with on these types of things. What would you do? You know, not asking you to commit to something, but how would you brainstorm that?
Yeah, there's some choices we would have to make a wider drive access point here, where we'd have to lose some parking, which is sort of a trade-off, in order to get cars in and over, so we'd have the ability to get out. We have to make a three-lane access point there, essentially.
Is that the only option then?
It's, haven't looked at all the options. And at this point, drive-through is one of the considerations that retailers are looking for when Fraunchu is interested in converting to retail. It's one of the subjects that comes up, so we did take a look at options for making that happen. Don't have a final option yet, based on this kind of conversation. But stacking is an issue. Risk, managing the risk of cars coming in the wrong direction and not being able to orient themselves quickly enough is certainly a concern. So, I don't have any other, we haven't spent enough time really looking at all of the design options, if the drive-through's even actually a part of it, and we don't know that for sure.
I have a question on a different topic. Mr. Anderson, if you could flip to the chart that shows the surrounding neighborhood, kind of the plat map. I'm just interested in your perspective. Obviously, you've given this some thought now that you're talking about trying to repurpose this. Talk to us more about your vision. I think you're right, there's a lot of employment in this area. There's a lot of potential stream of commerce for activity. What are you seeing? You know, this is one of our areas that was identified in the comprehensive plan as an area of potential change. What are you seeing for this area over the next 10 to 20 years as you've been kind of considering this repurposing of this property?
Mr. Chair, thanks. It's a good question. I don't know that we've thought quite that far. But, and, you know, certainly we see the change happening, and so I think we're comfortable to say we know there will continue to be. You know, we know the employment base is there. We know that employment base, for example, the One Corporate Center facilities that have, you know, considerable number of office employees. We know those folks are coming down to this area for lunch and, you know, midday, you know, sort of errands and the kinds of things that you want to do in a community center. And they don't have to cross 100, they don't have to cross 494. We know folks from Normandale Lake come up to this intersection to have lunch. We know people from One Corporate Center and this section will perhaps go across to, you know, down 494 by Normandale. So there's a lot of movement. We like to capture that activity, so folks from One Corporate Center or Public Works could walk down and have lunch at one of our tenants' spaces or be able to, you know, take care of other daytime business without having to get in their car and cross a highway. So that, you know, is part of the vision, and we think it's really a demand-driven opportunity. It's an opportunity to create better real estate in the city. We just have to be thoughtful about the kinds of things we're talking about here. Access, safety, you know, the pedestrian, creating the pedestrian environment. And, you know, longer term, I think in the periphery of this zone, there are some other development parcels in the area to the west of here a bit. And I think it's going to continue to want to be a mixed-use sort of area to a large degree. And I think that is what we have here today. I mean, we have a lot of uses from office to industrial to retail that sort of all live together pretty well.
And what are you seeing in terms of the demand? Is this vehicular, pedestrian, are you seeing pedestrian? I mean, are people walking to these kinds of service areas there?
Mr. Chair, I think that's the opportunity here, is to create some of those services and amenities that are going to let people walk. Whereas today, they have less opportunity to do that.
So if you could go to a place that you didn't have to get, get in your car and then go drive, and then, that that might be attractive to some people who are working in the area?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right.
Other questions? Commissioner Potts.
I guess I'll make a couple of comments. In my mind, this area would require a lot more signalization and traffic control to become pedestrian-friendly. You guys know that already, and I think this is an incredibly challenging site to increase the amount of use on the way you'd like to do. And I think the real proof of how it will work is once you put it through the filter of a traffic plan, particularly to see how it's going to impact the roadways around it. I think internal to the site, you guys know what you're doing, what the site can accommodate. There's no, there aren't really any adjacent parking spaces people can easily get to park in your neighbors, you know, a lot, if you hit a home run with the tenant you sign here. So I think that's the real test. I guess I've got one question for staff. If we approve this change as proposed, and then the landowner decided to tear down this building and redevelop it, would any parking variances be grandfathered into the site, or would it go back to step one?
It would go back to step one, but it would be rezoned for PCD 2.
Right, right, okay, thanks. So I think that, yeah, the traffic study is going to give you a lot of information.
Commissioner Carr.
Just a few comments. Obviously, this is a preliminary sketch plan, and I think the other commissioners have addressed some of the issues we typically look at is it pedestrian-friendly, the traffic and parking issues, landscaping, lighting, the use of patios to bring people together, and I see you've got that there. I don't know if I mentioned monuments or signage, what you might be doing there. The only thing, just looking at your preliminary sketch plan, it reminds me of a strip mall. If there's anything you can do from an architectural standpoint, obviously, that's your decision, what you're going to be doing, again, that'll invite people in, it'll become more attractive, whether that's through the use of facades or some additional stories added in certain locations will make it a more attractive building and attract potentially more consumers to the site. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just, to address some of your concerns, I think that the opportunities, this building right now is an office building. So to convert to retail, we've talked about many ways to do that. And I think the items you talk about, the delight, the pedestrian delight, so to speak, and that's the photographs that David presented, if you just go around town and see... If you just go around town and see these opportunities to have planters and patios, awnings, color, tasteful signage and some forms on the architecture, I think the building will, just taking the landscaping that's currently there down in the two sketch images we provided for you through the use of Photoshop, the trees are so overgrown, you could barely even see the building. And I bet if you asked most people, they wouldn't even know that it's there. It's a Realtor currently, so I think there's some great opportunities to do exactly what you're saying.
Chris, just looking at the zoning map, is 5101 PCD-4? And then the others surrounding it are PCD-2?
Yes, the gas station.
Is that what 5101 is, is the gas station?
Yes, and that's zoned differently than the rest. It's just zoned for automotive use.
And then, how about, you know, the surrounding properties? It looks like this is part of a cluster of properties that are zoned POD-1. And I know the 5100 is an office building. What, do we envision any? I mean, should there be any thought given to a broader rezoning of those properties, or are they all? You know, has anybody kind of given any, any thought to whether that's the right approach in the long run?
Well, in the comprehensive plan, it's guided for office use.
Oh, is it there?
Yes.
So, where does the industrial end?
The industrial is more to the west, the purplish.
Is it the west and the south?
And to the south, or whatever. What happened was, at some, when we were going through our last comprehensive plan amendment, we looked at that whole industrial area differently and for more of a mixed use.
Oh, I see.
And at the time, the city council amended it, they turned it back to industrial because we have some pretty viable uses in there. And it just so happened that all those commercial uses that are south of this site were guided for industrial in our old comp plan. So, then it fell back to what our old comp plan had. So, it's not consistent, what's zoned there now on the south side.
So, that's more of a housekeeping.
Right, that should be cleaned up.
And whether we go one property or more into this is maybe neither here nor there. Other comments?
Commissioner Forrest.
So, I'm, I'm curious. Basically, what you're, you're looking at is just a change in zoning, is that it? So, it's not so much a new project, a sketch plan, a new project, other than it's more exterior cosmetics and then to change the use. I am also concerned about the parking. I mean, that's a, I went through that lot, and it's a tight lot, even the way it is now, as far as getting on visually and everything. So, I am concerned about that, and also for a drive-through. I can see where it's an ideal location, but I'm not sure that, I don't know, depends on what the traffic people say, I guess. And I, when I, you're talking about closing a particular entrance along there, I was, I was thinking it would be the east one because when I'm driving east on that road, it looks a little more harrowing to me to get in and out that close to the major intersection down there. So, they're both a little bit awkward. I went in the wrong way. I couldn't see it, there wasn't any signage, and then I saw the parking places were going the other way. So, I'm, I'm not totally on board, I guess personally, yet, that this use is really compatible unless we have. You know, maybe just attract a bike shop as a tenant, then you won't need as many parking spaces.
Mr. Chair, I think we need PCD-2 to get a bike shop, that's the point.
Touche.
But, but to the, to the commissioner's point, if I could just respond, so, there, there's, you're clear that we understand is, we'd like to start with the idea that rezoning to PCD-2 would allow us then to develop a site plan and concepts that would allow us to prepare a site plan to bring to you that would address, you know, the code parameters for access, parking, stacking, those sorts of things. But the market will sort of allow us to design that within the context of the PC, you know, PCD uses that we'd like to bring into the site. So, we expect that that, we'd come back to you really conscious of those kinds of parking sensitivities, access points, the traffic elements you mentioned, we would look at that. But the starting point for us is, is the idea that PCD-2 is the correct zoning.
So, are you envisioning that you'd come back with a rezoning and then later come back with the use? Or are you coming back with kind of the whole package, including the rezoning?
Mr. Chair, they potentially could be together. I think it would be important for us to know that we were going in a direction to have the rezoning first.
Right.
So, then we could work on a, a good plan and bring that plan to you subsequently.
Well, and I do think this, our sketch plan process is a valuable, you know, you don't have to pour a bunch of time and energy and money into all of those particulars if, if the answer is, nah, we're not going to change the zoning. But, I do, I, on the flip side of that, I think it would be, you know, if, if we're kind of amenable to a change in zoning, it would be really helpful to do that in tandem with the proposed site layout and proposed use, et cetera. Would really be helpful, I think, for the city.
I concur with that. One of the things I've been struggling with is it's really hard to comment on something where there's so little to comment on. You know, and I'm not criticizing you in terms of, you know, what you have done or haven't done. It's just that, it's, it's just kind of difficult to get your arms around, you know, what we, what we know and what we, you know, given, given what we don't know.
But, I mean, I guess my perspective in terms of this zoning question is, we're, what we're essentially being asked is, are we, are we okay with extending the PCD-2 across the street to clip the corner of this cluster of office parcels? Which then gives that parcel an opportunity to serve without crossing streets a number of parcels. And if there's a pedestrian network, you might have an easier access. I think you're probably going to find that, you know, we're going to want to find a way to, to allow those people also to cross to the rest of the PCD-2 in a way that makes sense, and it's some of the traffic and signalization and like.
Yeah, if, if I could build on that, I guess I would, I would be up for a rezoning, but it has to work well. So, in order to pull it off, you may actually have to reduce your rentable area in order to increase the parking. So, you know, what I'm saying is, I don't want you to take, take my willingness to rezone as endorsing the plan you've proposed tonight, because there's not enough information there, and I think it's too steep a variance if you, if you were to come back and say, okay, we need a parking variance.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, again, I, you're right, we don't have enough information right now. I mean, it depends on what types of commercial businesses here, retail businesses here. Might be some brings traffic at a different time of day than others. I don't know if we'll, we'll know that at the time it's rezoned, but those are, could impact traffic. So, I would assume that the traffic study will take into account varying options in terms of what those retail sites will be and the traffic patterns associated with those. A restaurant has a different traffic pattern than a hairdresser. So, I'm, again, when you come back, I'm assuming you would come back with some sort of traffic study that might take into account those various options.
Commissioner Forrest.
Procedurally, I'm wondering, Chris, can you tell us, okay, if they get it rezoned and then they are allowed all of the uses in that district, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, if they don't change the structure much, basically, unless they need a variance, would they even need to come to us?
They would not unless they had a parking issue and they needed a parking variance.
But then, that's your due diligence too, to know what those parking requirements are and don't expect necessarily that that would be allowed. Okay, good.
Hey, you know, this is an area of town that, you know, it's very different than the other applications you saw earlier where we're up against single-family residential, and we're really trying to kind of blend and mix and fit in. I mean, this clearly, it's, it's an industrial office retail area. My inclination is, you know, you're reacting to market forces that you see out there that make repurposing this building make sense, and so I'm inclined to be responsive to that so long as we can get over the various hurdles of the logistics of how the property gets used and how the traffic gets managed and all the rest of those things.
I think as we go forward too, as, as we do and the council does, if this, you know, officially comes up for rezoning, I really, the comments that were made down the other end here about looking at pedestrians really wanting to be able to cross both ways makes, you know, that's an important thing too. Otherwise, it's a key corner, it's just a little bit snug. But when I look at all the other things, even to the north of there, all the offices and educational things that are there, I can see why having these kinds of things in the neighborhoods so people aren't driving even more miles somewhere else for whatever services they want, makes sense.
All right. I hope we've given you some guidance. Any, any other questions or closing kind of comments?
Mr. Chair, no, just thank you. We appreciate this opportunity to have this kind of forum, just some comments and thoughts. These have all been extremely helpful, and we'll continue on in our efforts and hopefully be back to you soon.
Are you planning to go to the city council with the sketch plan as well?
I think we will talk to staff about that.
I'd encourage you to do it. Just, I mean, the sketch plan is, is new to us, but our experience has been that it's a good idea to go to the council after you've seen us.
Yeah.
Because, you know, as much as they like our advice, they don't always take it, so.
Excellent, we'd love that opportunity. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report on the residential redevelopment ordinance recap from the city council meeting. And I asked to have this put on the agenda. As you all know, we have worked hard over the last six, seven months, led by Commissioners Platter, Potts, and Forrest on a set of zoning ordinance amendments that we officially recommended to the council at our last meeting in June, I think it was. And the council took those up at a meeting in July, at the July 16 meeting. And Commissioner Potts and Commissioner Forrest and I were able to attend and just kind of provide. Commissioner Potts provided a nice presentation along with Kerry to the council, and then we answered some questions as we went through the process, and wanted to report back to you on, on the gist of that. And so Kerry has laid out in his report kind of a summary on our nine items of how the council acted on all of those. And I wanted to address one of those issues tonight. You know, as I was just mentioning at the end of the last agenda item, our job is to provide advice and information and record development to the council so that the council can make decisions on a variety of these kinds of issues. And on legislative issues like this, I think we did a nice job of setting out these nine items. Some of them, they've agreed with and, and chosen to move forward with adopting. Some of them, they've decided that they can be handled in better ways and, and are not going to move forward with. There is one set of recommendations that I did want to address tonight because I'm concerned that in our presentation, we may not have alerted the council well enough to the, how we felt they were bundled. So, in particular, on this, items three and four with respect to the side yard setbacks, second floor setbacks and building height. We made recommendations to reduce the building height to thirty feet, to eliminate the side, the second-story setback requirement, and then to implement some greater side yard setback requirements on these lots of less than seventy-five feet in width. In their first reading, the council adopted the building height reduction recommendation, adopted the recommendation with respect to the elimination of the second-story setback, but declined to take on, declined to adopt the side yard setback changes that we recommended. I think that we probably weren't, I wasn't clear enough in answering questions, that we really felt like those three were a bundle of recommendations that were balancing what we thought were the things that we heard from our process and that it was important to have that balance. So, I, what I wanted to ask the commission tonight is to discuss the possibility of a statement to the council between their first and second readings of this ordinance, so that they would at least have clarity from us about what we intended. And if, in fact, you know, they recognize that and they want to proceed the way they voted on their first go-around, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure they're not missing the point that we were trying to make. And I say, you know, all of this is kind of a precursor, because I'm, I'm very, I want to be, I want to be careful of the precedent here. I'm not suggesting we're second-guessing what their decisions are on our recommendations, because we make the recommendations, they make the decisions. But I also don't want them to have missed a point that we think is important. And so, what I did for tonight is crafted a statement that I'd like you to consider. And there are some graphics that go with it, the Commissioner Potts put together after our meeting. And I'd just like to have a little bit of discussion about it and see if the commission is amenable to moving forward with a statement like this or, either this statement or something like it.
Commissioner Carpenter.
I read the statement early before I came down here, and I thought it was just fine. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's, from my perspective, I don't see a problem with it. I understand that we're not trying to instruct the council. It just seems like a good idea to go back and say, this is what we're thinking, this is what we meant, is that what you really interpreted? So, I think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Carr.
I don't have a problem with the clarification. I think it's actually quite important, because I believe that's what we heard from the constituents, that these types of issues, setbacks, height, et cetera, were all impacting the character of the neighborhood and that's really is a total package. So, I think it is important to clarify that. The only question I had was on the write-up in that, you said a provision that side yard setbacks on lots narrow than seventy-five feet be at least a total of twenty-five percent of the lot width, with a minimum setback no less than what currently exists. And I just didn't know how that worked out from a practical standpoint. It sounded somewhat restrictive on a lot of seventy-five feet, but I didn't know if we had any examples where that, where we've worked it out.
So, I included this because this was a suggestion that came to us, and it may have even been after our adoption. I can't remember if it was before or after our recommendation, yeah. So, the math is a good question. For instance, on a forty-foot lot, twenty-five percent would be at ten feet of side yard setbacks, which is what it is now, five feet on either side. On a, you know, and then it would, you know, on a fifty-foot lot, that'd be a twelve and a half foot of setbacks.
And we were proposing twelve.
We were proposing, right.
In theory, complicated formulas.
One of the things I think that the council was reacting to is we had this whole table of foot-by-foot kind of calculations, and I think they were feeling like that was a little cumbersome. And one of the things they expressed as a goal in this process was to get greater simplicity and clarity for someone reading the code. And so, I added this as a, you know, a suggestion, just to say, I don't think we were as concerned about the, the way you get to the increase in the side yard setbacks as we were, that you include some kind of an increase in the side yard setbacks. The other thing that came up in the meeting was that I think some council members were not fond of the notion that you'd have a larger setback on one side than the other. And again, I'm not, I'm not wedded to that one way or the other. If, if people feel strongly that it ought to be an equal setback on both sides, I'm, I'm okay with that. But that was, that was one of the issues I think that came up.
But couldn't they, they could have them equal if they wanted to.
That's my point. If that's, I don't think we feel that strongly about the staggered side yard setback. It's just the total distance that we're trying to increase.
And there's a minimum on each side, you know.
Right, and that there be some minimum, yeah.
Yeah, I think we only said there was a minimum, so if someone wanted.
Yeah, I think we only said there was a minimum, so if someone wanted six and six, they could have done that.
And, and if the council wanted to adopt something that said that the side yard setbacks on each side had to be the same, you could do that, too.
Yeah, and I think that is a great example of how maybe we could have presented this bundle a little more clearly than we did. And that what we were after was, was a grouping of three things, reducing the maximum height, increasing the side yard setbacks, and eliminating the second story side setback.
Right.
To, to your point, yeah, the, the mechanics of how we get there, we're happy to have something that's sort of as elegant and, and simple as possible while meeting those goals. And so this one example of the 25% of the lot furniture for a side yard setback meets that very nicely. And so it eliminates those tables, which are cumbersome to, to have graded setbacks.
And, and fairness to the council, I mean, this came to them on an evening when there were many other items on their agenda, and it was six or seven months of our work, really going elbow deep in this stuff, and they were asked to manage it in a meeting. So I totally understand how it's a lot to digest, right?
I will say, though, that, and I don't have the tables right in front of me, I think that we actually requested that we use tables because we thought that would be easier when someone was reading the code to know exactly what the setback would be. That was our intention for adding that table.
We did. I mean, was there initially a formula or something? And we just said, let's just list it out. But we're fine either way.
Yeah, I think we can, I think the message is, we're, we're okay either way. If this is a suggestion that makes it simpler and, and clearer, then we're fine with that. But if they wanna stay with the table, we're fine with that as well. I just wanna make sure they're aware of how we felt they were bundled together so that it, whatever decision they make, they make it understanding that that was an important issue to us.
Commissioner Forrest.
I'm still a little bit concerned that have we done all that we need to do or have we gone as far as we need to go? Because we've reduced the height, which I think is really an important thing, it's helpful, as far as the impact on the neighbors. But again, I'm wondering, when we look at certain streets that have mostly one and one and a half story homes, and then the, the bulk and the mass is really not gonna be minimized very much at all. When you get a two-story large house with a lot of square footage, it's, I mean, the height helps a lot, but I'm, I'm just thinking of what we were hearing from residents before this process started, as far as what the issues were, completely aside from construction management type issues. There were, the mass, the intrusion they felt on their privacy, their light, those kinds of things. And I, I just, you know, it's, it's nice that this group is slowed enough that it can be revisited in the future again. And that's, that's my only concern, but I'm really glad we're moving forward. And I, personally, I like that 25% approach because of its simplicity.
And I wanna be careful that we're not, I'm not suggesting we relitigate any of the, any of the issues that we already debated before making our recommendations. I'm just trying to make sure we're clarifying the recommendation that we did make.
And just looking at the ordinance amendments that were proposed, are you talking about the, on page 10, the interior side yard setbacks? That's the table. And I, and I guess when looking at it, I can see where the reaction is, is that it looks, it appears to be complex. But again, I think, I just wanna reemphasize that our intention was, is that by avoiding the use of percentages, this would actually spell it out so that there were no questions.
So with that, I would take a motion to approve the statement and approve forwarding the statement and the drawings to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
I was wondering if we could just add a statement to that letter indicating that our intention of putting the table in was to actually simplify and make it clear to someone reading the code exactly what the side back, side setbacks would be by use, through the use of a table.
I mean, we could just add that as a, you know, that's gonna be part of the minutes, we could add that as a statement that goes with this. One of the things Chris and I talked about at what is, how do we convey this? Some other commissions have used some formats or another, I'm not familiar with what they are, but my inclination is to leave it to staff to figure out the right way to convey the message. And I think along with that, we can convey the message that, you know, the table was intended to try to bring greater clarity. If they think it's clear the other way, that's fine with us. Okay.
So we basically throw staff under the bus. I just wanna make sure we're clear on this.
No, they're on the bus.
Well, I, we did request staff to do the table, so that's.
That's right, yeah.
We did. I did, or somebody did.
We both did.
Yeah, we both did. So we're under the bus together.
Right. Further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, posed? All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Chris, for your work on that. Okay. Great. All right. The last item on reports and recommendations is Living Streets Working Group, appointing planning commission reps to the working group. What I would like to do is just get a motion to appoint Commissioners Carr and Platter to be our representatives on the Living Streets Working Group, which I understand is being formed and will be moving forward shortly.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there further discussion? This is your last chance to back out. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And we'll look forward to your reports on that activity. Then next up is correspondence and petitions. I don't know if there was a council connection this week, no council connection this week. We, you got the in-person council connection from the July 16 meeting, our, our little report of the zoning. I didn't stay for the whole ice skating thing, but I think you could all read about that in the newspaper. The attendance sheet is in here as well. In terms of chair and commission member comments, any comments from commission members? Commissioner Carr?
Well, I believe we may have discussed this at some point, but this was a good report in that we got a summary of what the city council action was with respect to our proposal. But, and I don't know if this has ever been discussed before, but we, oftentimes, we, you know, make recommendations to the city council. I personally do not know how the city council voted on those issues. Now, maybe there's some place I should be looking to, to read those. But I'm just wondering if, just for the benefit of feedback to the planning commission, we couldn't get a report from the staff at our, you know, at each meeting as to what action was taken by the city council as to our recommendations. Might give us some guidance as to how the city council is reacting to our recommendations. And I just think it would be good feedback.
I think that's an excellent idea, and I'll work with Jackie and Chris and Carrie to see how we can do that. Council connection does some of that, but, but it would be nice for us to just kind of make sure we're circling back and understanding what happens with the proposals we make.
Commissioner Platter? You know, tried with the meeting notes, but it seems the meeting notes don't come out till a fair amount after. So the way to find out kind of is to watch the whole video, and that's tough to do a lot of time.
You can jump to each item, though, too, at all the videos.
But it may be, it may be as simple as an agenda item in these kind of staff reports or staff comments where we can just, you know, we can hear if there were items that we made recommendations on and they were handled at a council meeting, we can just hear one way or the other, how it went.
Yeah, and I think we're talking about only rec, items that came through here, right?
Right.
So, you know, yeah.
All right. I'll talk with Carrie further about that.
So for example, if we recommended something, and you know, sometimes we have a division on the votes, we recommended something and the city council approves that, but they may attach additional conditions to it, or they disapprove it, that'll give us feedback again on.
Right.
Their direction.
Good point. Other comments from commission members? I would just report that we had the first meeting of the Grand View, whatever we're calling it for this phase, community advisory group, team, whatever, there's 11 of us.
I'm chairing.
I am not chairing, I succeeded in not chairing that group. Mike Fisher and Jennifer Janovy are gonna co-chair it, and I think they're gonna do terrific work. And we've got a lot of work ahead of us. My, my parting transition as a past chair was that I said that I, I was hoping that there would be some kind of an establishment that would be built as part of the redevelopment and that I would be able to have a beer at that establishment sometime before I needed a senior discount. So that's the, that's the modest goal we're aiming for. I ticked tack, yeah, it's sooner than it feels, but, or it feels sooner than it is, that's it. So I have that to report on, and Mike Schroeder, Michael Schroeder and I are on that group, and so we'll continue to report to you on that. And I don't know, has there been more on the France Avenue? Have you been invited to a meeting yet, Commissioner Carr?
Not yet.
Not yet, although I was informed my name was added to the email list.
Yes, yes, we accomplished it. So we'll, we'll look forward to hearing on that. And that, I think, will dovetail nicely with the Living Streets work that the two of you are gonna do as well. Yes?
One other comment that came up during a community comment was the concept of having the tear-down supervisor look at remodels. And I actually, I thought that gentlemen brought some good issues up, as you commented on as well, about how do we follow through? And I'm just wondering, again, if the staff might report back to us and exactly how on remodels the process is followed through on. I don't understand that process, but I'm assuming a building permit is issued for only a certain period of time, and that if the construction is not finished, you would have to renew that building permit. But again, what kind of enforcement and supervision exists currently on remodels? Because I do think the remodels can cause just as much disruption as a tear-down.
And, and I think one of the things we're hoping to get on our agenda is a visit from, remind me her name again?
Cindy Larson.
Cindy Larson. She, I know, is very busy getting up and running, but I, Carrie and I have talked about the idea that she come to one of our meetings and just have a chance to share a little bit of what she's seeing, and we can share questions like this and see if maybe it's appropriate to manage these things. And asking, as, I think these enforcement questions are really helpful for us because then we start to get a sense of how it really works out there when we deal with the theory of saying, you know, you have to apply for this or get this. How does it, how does it work on the ground when you actually get out there? And it's really helpful feedback for us. Okay. Any staff comments? Thank you, Chris, for soldiering on this evening without Carrie and Jackie as well and Jordan. I don't know, I'd, at five minutes after 10, I feel like we have to go for another hour and a half, but maybe we can make an exception tonight.
Yes, I would like to make an exception, and I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.